Great, and we don't have anybody who participated electronically. Can I have a motion?
Both to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will move forward to the 24, 25 Head Start and Early Head Start, Refunding Application and Board Training.
Thank you guys so much for allowing me the time to do this. I've included way more information than needed. You know, I just kind of get a little bit excited about all that we do for families. First up is our philosophy. As you can see, it's just a little bit wary. We are going to work this summer to shorten it, make it a little more memorable, maybe with some taglines. But really, in summary, we strive for partnership with family, student, and school, just to ensure successful futures for all involved. The next slide, it is very similar to the at-a-glance that you guys have received in the past. I do just want to call your attention to the fact that our Head Start program, Early Head Start program, Virginia Preschool Initiative Full Day program, those numbers do not change. We will always have 251 Head Start, 28 Early Head Start, and 83 Full Day Virginia Preschool Initiative students. Our next couple of slides, this one is just really brief. It's a summary of what it actually looks like in our school, how many teachers, classes. But we have 710 students that we're serving as of February this year. And the next slide just talks about our demographics. So this is what it looks like in our program. This slide is our academic slide. So as you can see, I just want to show you our growth. So the growth, the spring is in that light blue. And then the darker, or the fall is the light blue. The darker blue is the spring. We take what you guys may know of as the PALS. It's LLS now, so those numbers reflect there. And then we take the VKRP, which also go, those are also done in kindergarten. We really set our kids up for success, as you can see.
Can you explain what the VKRP is?
Yes, Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Program. So it is math, okay?
Geometry, four years old.
Well, shapes, shapes.
Oh, same here. Like, you're more aware of kids than you.
Kids have. What do you mean that?
Pythagorean theorem.
I got a headache over there.
A squared plus B squared equals C squared.
Never too young to learn. I just saw that, I was like, but then patterns are next to it, which is why it didn't click.
So you could go to preschool and just be sitting and just start over.
Better get it right.
Perfect.
That's right.
So our next three slides are actually about family services, family engagement, and our library program. We do a lot of outreach, of course, as you, the board, know. You've been to our Thanksgiving meal, you've provided books for our families. And just on this slide, I really want to highlight the fact that 4,200 books have been donated to families. And that's so far this year. That, to me, is an outstanding number. So thank you again for your donations, and we receive those from other community members as well. This is just a little snapshot of what our Head Start and Early Head Start program look like. This is like the makeup, so who we accept, what it looks like for the parents on that side, how many families we serve, and just like their income status. All right. This slide is for our Head Start program goals. As you can see, we have three that we strive for. This is in addition to our Stafford County School Improvement Plan. We're constantly seeking continuous improvement for all of our goals, and we assess that through our annual self-assessment process. So each one, like we assess our human resources, we assess our facilities, and we talk about goals in those areas for improvement. The next slide here, as you know from previous trainings, Head Start is very, very, very into health and wellbeing, health and wellness for staff, students, and the families that we serve. So there's just a little snapshot of those numbers. This snapshot here is of our Early Childhood Special Education Program, which you guys are very familiar with because you know that our numbers are growing. And you, the board, have given us the money to expand our North Star location, so we're very thankful for that. But I do want to let you know that the way that we calculate our student growth is different from K-12. So we calculate it from the beginning of the school year to the end, because we have ongoing enrollments. If a child shows up at Child Find and needs services, we serve them. So that's why our numbers look a little bit different and not typical as to what you're used to as far as growth. This slide is about, we do have a quality rating. So all of our schools K-12 have a quality rating on the Virginia Department of Education website, and so now our pre-K will as well. We participated in the practice year last year, and we met or exceeded the expectations in all categories. But they use a system called CLASS. It's an observation system. And what it is, two internal observations and one external. So someone from the state comes and observes in our classrooms, and those scores kind of merge together to create our final score for our quality rating. What they're looking for is quality interactions with our students. So positive climate, instructional support, how productive are our classrooms? And it gives us a great snapshot of what we need to work on and what we're doing really well. This last slide is just about our budget. It's a small snapshot, which I'm sure you guys are familiar with. But I did just want to call your attention to, you may see that in the Stafford County Public Schools column, we did expend more than we received. That is because our ECSE program has grown so much throughout the school year. Last year, we added three additional classrooms. So that's why you'll see that little disparity there. But otherwise, that's our snapshot from last year. And so that is it. I tried. But I would love to answer any questions that you have about our program. Again, thank you as the board for being so supportive of all of our programs. We really appreciate it.
Sort of surprising that between 2016 and 2022, the end-of-year ECSE enrollment was relatively stable, and then all of a sudden it was a bump.
Oh, gosh, yes. That '22, '23 school year, it was like everyone came. That year was like 70% growth within the school year.
Yeah, that's a lot.
It was a lot.
Isn't that just post-COVID, though, that people were reluctant?
But it's from 2016, though. If you look 2016 to '17, all of the end-of-year is relatively static.
Sure, but there was growth, and so you may have had, you may have had, there may have been growth in 2017.
People just decided not to wait until.
Well, and.
Because they can enter at, what age do they?
Two.
Two.
So if you think about 2020, if we're talking about '22, '23 school year, they would be two, almost three.
So what's the, do you have a predictive calculation that you use for enrollment? Or like, I mean, how are you at that? And then what, how do we avoid doing this to your next son?
See, we really try our best.
I know.
We looked, we try to look, generally, we try to stay at like 35% growth per year.
Okay.
That's just, what we've seen has worked in the past. Now, this one year was an outlier.
Right.
And, but generally, we're kind of staying in the same. That's why we ask for additional teachers next year and the extra space.
Right, right.
And, you know, we're going to get it, and that'll be good. But generally, we try to look at 35% growth within this year.
So this is the first time you've had a discrepancy this large, is what you're saying, in terms of your receipt when it's spent?
Yes, that '22, '23 year, yes.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure that we're like.
It's been two years, because this year was also.
This year. Yes, it's not the, not the end of the year yet, but we are at 64% growth within the school year right now.
Oh, wow.
Okay. That's big.
I remember you explained this before, but how the waitlist situation works. Like, there are some kids we take all the time. And then, and then everybody else, we operate on like a wait list, or?
Yes, so that's the Head Start, Early Head Start, and BPI Full Day programs that we have. It's an income-based program, so you apply. And then we have a, an application kind of tool that you fill out when you want to enroll with us, that, you know, if you receive SNAP benefits, if you are widowed or divorced, if you are a victim of domestic violence, you check off these things, and they are assigned a point value. And so basically, then students are ordered based on the point value. And the point value is based on me, right? So if somebody is a foster student, or a foster child, or if they're, they've witnessed domestic violence, they're probably going to move up a little bit, or they're homeless. They're going to move up on that list, so that they're the next when a slot becomes available.
Do you all still have peer models in the early childhood classes?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Those are your positions to fill, correct?
What now?
How successfully do you fill those peer positions?
Well, they are rolling applications, just like kind of our students who come through with disabilities. We do struggle a little bit more to fill those positions. And my understanding is that, that we need to get better in our process of promoting that. And so we're working on that. We've got more things on our website. When we're recruiting for Head Start and BPI, we're also recruiting for those slots now. So we're really up to it.
Anybody else have?
I'm just looking at the budget page.
Yes, ma'am.
I see, understandably, you know, the federal Head Start is going up. But based on this, the Stafford County Public Schools amount is going down from this year to next year. Is that, or maybe you're reading it wrong.
Well.
That's budgeted for '23, '24.
That was this, yeah, that was this year. This is a reflection of last year's budget.
So, so we actually budgeted less for this year than we did for last year?
Than we expended?
Budgeted in '22, '23 for this. You spent this, and then you budgeted for this for this year. So you budgeted for less than you spent, but not for what you budgeted.
Correct.
Okay, I'm sorry. This is all this year, this line, this is not this year.
No, it's dated from last year. Twenty-two, '23.
Okay, so '22, '23. What was budgeted, received, it means budgeted?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait, that doesn't, and why was?
See, the budgeted amount was $3 million, and the received and expended.
Four million.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get it straight in my mind. So for, so for the, '22, '23, last year, we budgeted, how much?
Three point five.
Three, well, almost four million. But we expended 4.6. All right, so that was last year. So this year, we budgeted, we budgeted less for this year than we actually spent last year. Because that just doesn't seem to make sense.
Well, we thought it was an aberrant amount of growth.
And your federal revenue is going up, so it's counterbalancing a little bit there. But your total budget down at the bottom is going up because your population is going up. It's just where you're getting the revenues are changing.
But if we, if the first column is what was budgeted.
From the previous year.
From the previous year. All right. And the second column is what was actually spent. So we must have adjusted the budget at some point.
You did.
Because of growth?
Yeah, you did last year.
It's like they don't do a September 30 count, really.
Right.
Right, because that's a moving target.
So their budget was based, yeah. So we've spent more, because we have kids coming in, but then they'll get paid.
What do you expect we're going to spend this year compared to what we budgeted?
I think your projection's pretty good. The, you had a little bit of an abnormality with that budget here, '22, '23. And of course, working through this year, I think we're.
Better prepared. Yeah, that's really, that's a question for Mr. Fulmer. He's probably watching on the screen.
I do definitely think that we are better prepared. And we are also, we can apply for additional BPI slots for our ECSE program as well, because anybody that's four years old, attends five days a week, and has an IEP, we can get money from the state for BPI for that. So we have some other sources.
So this is one of the few programs that the cost went down from last year's issue. Because we look for other sources.
The cost.
The cost to the staff, the school.
Well, that's, that's, we don't say the cost to officers.
That's right.
That's good.
Yeah. I'd say that this is encouraging, both on a couple of fronts, because this is, the best money spent in public education is in early childhood. It's got the highest return on investment. And, you know, there's a, there's a healthy mix of federal, state, and local funds that are being expended to support the program, and proper planning, thanks to our director. Great job.
I would say just, I know you said you're going to trim this down, but there's so many intangible things that like, you just, people just don't know. With Head Start, it's like a magical world. I honestly think our society would actually be fixed if every class ran as a Head Start, as a former Head Start mom. So I just, I understand why it's long.
Yes, exactly.
Because it's all so important. Like, every little thing in here is what makes it so important, so.
It's not about just building strong kids to enter kindergarten. It's about building stronger families who can support those.
It's really, really good. And we were a peer person, and I even, I like, I felt guilty taking advantage of some of the awesome things, but they're like, no, Miss God, come. I'm like, this is great. Like, I needed this for my other kids, you know? There's so much stuff, so.
So when is the school board going to go back? Before your time, the school board used to serve dinner, I think.
Thanksgiving meal.
Yeah, we used to do it twice a, twice a year.
We used to actually serve it.
I mean, no.
You guys are welcome anytime.
No, no, we actually prepare. We, I think we paid for, we paid for the dinner, we catered it, we served it to the family. It was a family night.
Yes.
For Head Start, but we used to do it twice a year.
It was just once a year, but it was pre-COVID, it stopped when.
Yeah, it was in the springtime. It was, but that gave us that exposure that y'all are talking about with the families.
Love to have that again.
That we shifted to the Thanksgiving. The impact of Head Start on the families, because we do the dinner, and then they go off for training, and the parents would have training, and the kids would have training, and we get to read.
There weren't conflicts, weren't as many conflicts with board members as Thanksgiving was.
Right.
Yes.
This was different, though. We'd spend an evening, basically, at Head Start.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Please, come visit me, call me, you can come to our schools. But thank you, all of you board members, thank you, we appreciate you. Of course, of course, thank you.
Thanks. Student dress code, student cell phones, and student code of conduct.
Next crew is coming in from the. It's actually going to be Dr. Schutz and Dr. Stempel.
Look at this table, it's bouncing.
There's one right there. There's one right there.
The back row made it work for me.
I see, this is stressful.
There we go. Go ahead.
Okay.
Well, good evening. We're here to present three topics for your information this evening. So we'll dive in. First one is the Student Code of Conduct Summary of Recommendations. We need to communicate, we need to better job communicate and educate our students, our staff, our parents about specific expectations. We need to promote consistency and enforcement of consequences to the violations across all schools. And then there are other changes forthcoming, we believe, after the general assessment information. We also have areas of consideration, laws and regulation, results, research results we'll share with you from our cellphone usage and our dress code, and some other recommendations. My dexterity's not very good. So Virginia Code, Virginia Code requires us to have a Student Code of Conduct. That is obviously required, and Virginia Code specifically states certain things that need to be in there. We may have a more stringent code, but the model policies are developed by the Virginia Board of Education. And they must include procedures for suspension, expulsion, and exclusion decisions, discipline options and alternatives. And it does have prohibitions, prohibitions on hazing, profane abuse of language or conduct, bullying, cyberbullying, tobacco, or nicotine vapor products. Interesting that the code specifically calls out certain things and not others. So the first recommendation is.
Oh, my God, it's Christmas. Christmas children are calling Santa. Oh, my God.
Not yet.
The first recommendation for student discipline is an expectation for setting expectations. And I say that as a former principal of 21 years. That any expectation starts, begins, middle, ends with what the expectation set by the principal of the school is. And the culture of any organization shaped by the worst behavior the leader is willing to tolerate. So the expectation setting starts and must start with the principals of our schools. Some of the things that we're going to work with, setting those expectations, town halls, we have the ability to do live town halls, questions, answers, videos from principals, class meetings, letters home. And we must begin, and to get more involved, our parents more involved in this process. More use of our overnight suspensions to create behavior, bus suspensions. Parents can ride the bus for their kids, with their kids, to reinstate them on the bus. We don't require that. I will tell you, probably took one or two times a parent doing that and changed the kid's behavior. They don't want to ride the bus with their kid, with their parent. And then something Dr. Taylor has instituted this year, we want to make sure that we are very tight on it, is reentry meetings for all out-of-school suspensions. Parents must be with their child to reenter the school after a suspension.
Do we have questions now, or should we wait?
Probably wait.
Yeah.
There's two sections. There's a Student Conduct section, and then a Dress section. So you maybe want to do it in two chunks, yeah?
It's three things, right?
Yeah.
Three things, yeah.
Then the level setting to eliminate inconsistencies that you're hearing about, you're seeing within schools. I know you're hearing it, it's a constant work in, work in progress. And one of the things we are going to hold this summer is Discipline Summit. It's going to be held July for all administrators. Typically, discipline things have been part of a long list of items covered in the day. This will be the only thing we do one afternoon with all of our administrators. We're just going to focus on discipline, discipline hearings, and so forth on that particular day. It will not be part of 12 topics in one day, where you just can't possibly take it all in. It's going to be one afternoon, one topic, discipline in our schools. And then more oversight's needed, and we recognize that. We're looking at a potential addition of an Office of Student Conduct. It's something that really needs to be considered, so that we have some oversight for this and someone responsible for this in our school. So break number one, questions, go ahead.
Dr. Warner. Okay, I'm going to go first. I was wondering, I know at the Phoenix Center, they use a contract, that the students come in, they sign a contract, the parents are part of that. When we have students that have an out-of-school suspension, particularly a prolonged one, is that something that we can look at? Is it something we do?
No, it's not something we do. We do have.
I just like things in writing, like two parents, like, this is what your child is expected to do to the kid, this is what you are expected to do, and everybody signs it. I just think that it adds that reinforcement that we're looking for. Other question I have is just that we're getting an awful lot of complaints about bullying, because there's so many opportunities for kids to bully. It's not just, you know, it's getting beat up in the bathroom anymore, it's the, it's the online stuff. It's the Instagram, and Facebook, and TikTok, and it seems to be almost a doxing of students, and then it becomes very prolific, and I don't know how we address that.
It is difficult. When I held my parent meetings, I would say, you know, when I grew up, if you were bullied at school, at least you would go home and get away from it. Now, it's with you 24/7, because our kids won't put away phones. They're addicted to them at night, so the bullying doesn't stop, and that's the hardest aspect.
Well, other people get sucked into the whole process. So it's not even just you're being bullied by one idiot, you're being bullied by them and all their friends.
But it's concerning that you say that the kid is able to away there always.
At night, I had an email just answering.
I'm just saying, you're making it the child's responsibility.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sorry, they don't have the, the prefrontal cortex to be taking care of that themselves, right? I think.
So I totally agree with that. I think that we have to place a higher expectation level on the parents to understand what's bleeding into our school system is a direct result of the constancy of social media. I'm going to wait for you to be done, I have a few things.
I'm done, I'm done, go.
So is it okay if I go next?
Sure.
So I have a bunch of things on the Code of Conduct in general. I think the biggest thing for me, I'd like to see us really start to do, we have this overnight suspensions, and parents must, parents have to meet the mandatory meeting. I'd like to see us institute a mandatory phone call if a child is kicked out of a classroom, and that child cannot return back to that class until the parent has been made aware. Because here's what I'm hearing, the kid's getting sent home with a referral slip, and where's that referral slip going? 10 out of 10 times, not to the parent. So the parent may not even be aware. And then I hear the same thing, emails are gone, unresponded, phone calls are going unreturned, and it's super easy for a parent to just play dumb and say, I don't know any things are happening. I've ne, I didn't get your voicemail, I didn't get your email. I don't know if that's the truth or not, that's not my job. But at the end of the day, I think these kids, like, the biggest complaint from teachers is, I kicked this kid out for being disrespectful or disrupting the learning environment, and they're back in two minutes. So for me, I'd like to see us, hey, you got one shot? Okay, we'll give you one more chance to get it right. And if you can't after that, your parent must call us in order for you to return to that classroom. I don't think that's an unrealistic expectation.
Oh, I thought you meant we would call them, saying, hey, little Johnny got kicked out. So you're saying that you notify the parent, and then the parent has to make contact with someone in the administration before they can be allowed back?
Right, so we can say, this is what's happening with your child in the classroom, we will allow them back. This is the behavior we anticipate from this child, now the parent is aware. And like, everybody's on the same page, right? We've done it for these, which I think is a great thing. I'm not saying all parents are knowingly ignoring us, but for those who don't actually have it, it definitely goes a long way for us to be like, Mom, I can't go back to class until you call, is, is, you call my principal.
I just cut class, I just don't go to school. I leave, and then the school, I can't go until my parent calls. So my parent doesn't call, I just won't go to school.
Practitioner pointed out to you that that's an easy out for a kid. If I'm in math, I can't pick out a math, my parent doesn't call.
And I can excuse my way, I can find excuses for all of these things, but at some point, we have to draw the line and say, this is what we're going to do, and we can't let people misuse their rep. No, I, I, yes.
I think there should be an initial contact from us.
But to that point, Dr. James, right? To that point, we have to set a higher expectation level, and we are not doing that either. And the higher expectation level is also to the parent. Like, you have to start paying attention to what your child is doing during the school day. It's not a free-for-all. So I would like us to consider that. On the bullying topic, the complaint that I get, and I have gotten this year three times, is that there is not enough of a paper trail being kept for parents to go back and feel. They, I have two instances where the parent legitimately went in and said, my child is going to break if this doesn't stop. And when she asked for paper backup, they were like, we don't keep records, which I know is not true. I don't know why that was told. But then again, her daughter finally snapped and hit the kid. And now she's suspended after three and a half months of trying to get somewhere with that. We have to stop that. There has to be a mechanism in place. And I don't know what happens with the paperwork or how that works, I'm not even getting involved with that. But something has to be changed there, because there needs to be a paper trail for these kids. The third thing I had is, and some of it's related to the dress code, too. I don't think our kids come in acting as they're dressed 90% of the time. Pyjamas, lazy, right? Like, I, I cannot tell you how many times I have heard, and I'm not asking for kids to come in.
Isn't he coming later?
Yeah, she's on her roll. Why don't we?
I just remember there was like a survey, and I thought.
Yeah, but I, I do think it ties into the discussion that we're having about behavior, which is, we're not, we are not placing, I don't, not that all of our kids are going to meet our expectations, but I think a lot of our kids that we've asked to thrive, they rise up and meet that, right? So if I don't place a high expectation on them, why would they bother trying to? They're just going to meet the lowest one we set. So for me, I think that's a big issue. I think we haven't placed a high enough expectation for our kids to strive to. And I think they can do it if we did it.
Does anyone have anything?
So how are we providing parents with the Student Code of Conduct these days? It's only through synergy unless you have support.
You have to acknowledge that.
Right. But you may not actually read it, you can just go there and click, click, click.
It's correct.
You have to go all the way down, though. You can't just click it, I tried. You have to scroll all the way down.
For each child.
My kid is going to do what they're going to do, okay? All right, I'm going to sign it.
I mean, I just, I just, you know, we used to send home a hard copy of it, and then you would have a hard copy in your house of the Student Code of Conduct, and you had to sign it. And I understand we probably save money by not killing those trees, but we may be undermining parents actually knowing what the Code of Conduct is.
But I didn't read it, I just flipped to the page and signed it. So what, you can't, you can't make them pay.
I just have a point of clarification. I just want to know what a, a price suspension, because it's consistent, because I'm not familiar with that.
So we have a process by which.
We're so proud of you.
Thank God.
You suspend the student until the parent comes back, comes in with that student.
It means they can't do like any sporting events or anything that might be happening at school that evening, too. So they're, they, they're blocked, correct, they can't.
So, so, you know. Right, so it's, for all intents and purposes, it's a suspension until the parent brings you in. So if the parent can't bring for a week.
But you, so you can't come back the next day?
Yeah.
So you could put like a multiple choice question at the end of the student code of conduct, have a couple of questions just to make sure parents actually read them.
I'm not a robot. The teacher.
Most of the classes are up there, we'll get a crosswalk. It will be a quiz.
Where, when do students sign the student code of conduct?
Well, yeah.
That's not even supposed to be rhetorical, I mean, do they do it during a class meeting, do they?
No, it's not during class meetings, class meetings are usually.
So we have a student code of conduct that parents are allowed to click through and ignore, but that students may or may not ever see unless, we don't ask them for it.
There should be a quiz for students.
That would be great, but.
They used to have to sign.
That.
I remember when.
I think, I think I started to sign that I had gone over it with my children is what I would do.
So, I'm going to point out something here. How members of the board, and you have worked with your children, is not necessarily consistent with how other families in Stafford have worked with their children.
Right.
Yeah.
And collecting and maintaining sheets with signatures on them has not been a strength of Stafford County in the past.
Nope.
For the 29-plus thousand students that we have, there are not 29,000 signature pages that get collected every year.
Right.
And the administrative burden of collecting a piece of paper and maintaining that record for a period of time is, should factor into some of the.
But we don't have it on their side of synergy, we don't have it on student fuels or secondary kids?
I can't confirm that or not, I actually think we do, but.
And that's basically why I asked, if they have the same thing.
Yeah.
Well, maybe student orientation, especially the.
The transition day?
Transition day, should be something that the code of conduct is discussed and students are made familiar with it. Have to, you know, even go online and sign it, scroll through it and sign it as it's being reviewed. Maybe that could be part of it, then at least you know they're hitting it at each grade level.
You said they are already.
Yeah, they cover it in a transition.
We should make an SOL.
More SOL.
So, can I ask a question, what are your recommendations for setting expectations? And I'm glad to hear that you're going to have a discipline because that's also another thing, reading through the surveys was inconsistencies within a building, but also inconsistencies outside of the buildings. This building does it this way, you know, administratively. Are our administrations currently holding town halls? Or is that going to be, is that what you're recommending is a new recommendation?
We had a couple.
Jim Stempel did, and so.
Okay.
Some schools do and some schools don't.
So we're now making it a hall system?
Okay, so for clarity, okay. Some schools have a grade level assembly that is in the format of a town hall to discuss expectations, to discuss the code of conduct and discuss other things that are happening in the school.
Okay.
This is a practice that the majority of our schools do, but not every school does.
Wow.
So, it's a, it's a best practice.
Will that change? Are we going to get consistent with all the schools?
That's kind of part of that is the.
No, I thought they, whenever I hear town hall, I think us.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking, but you're talking about building level.
But I was also thinking that with town hall, you were talking about administration to parents, but this is administration to students.
Oh, it can be either way.
But currently, we don't have town hall with parents, we have town hall with students. At some locations.
Yeah, just bring some more clarity and some options for people to get their expectations set.
Okay.
So, this meeting that's going to be with discipline summit, that's just with administrators?
Yeah.
So what is the idea then, is the administrators will then talk with the teachers in their building?
Share some best practices on how to implement the things we're talking about.
So, one of the data points that you got in the survey data was reflective of the fact of inconsistency within a certain school in adjudication of discipline. So, just like teachers need professional learning on a specific topic, so does the administration too. And, and not just within the school, but also within the county, high school administering disciplinary consequences with some consistency, middle doing it with some consistency, elementary doing it with some consistency.
Right, I mean, I'm just, I'm just, you know, you can train your administrators, but if your teachers are all over the map, then it doesn't, you know.
We ready to move on to the next section?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so I pick up the baton here from Dr. Stempel. So, following the format that we did when we just discussed discipline, we're going to go through for both cell phone usage as well as dress code, the law and regulation, the research results that we conducted within Stafford schools, and then our recommendations. I will get this, I apologize, here we go. Okay, so the regulation regarding student cellphone. We, in the Virginia Code, that it permits the school boards to regulate the use of cellphones and to establish the disciplinary procedures for violations, so you have the ability to make decisions here. So, we, to get a sense of how both our students as well as our staff, and then of course our parents, the three stakeholder groups, we administered a survey, we administered this survey in.
I'm so sorry for interrupting, and I apologize, Dr. Shutz. Can we go back to the state law for a second?
Yes.
This is actually way more important than, than it really does need to be stated, that very frequently, we do have parents and students say, you can't tell me what to do with my child's cellphone.
Oh my God, that's in my notes.
Okay. I want to be very clear.
You, we can.
Yes, we can, okay.
See, say, where they.
So, I want to reiterate how absolutely important this one slide actually happens to be, and I'm so sorry for interrupting, Dr. Shutz.
I think it could be a social media post.
So to help inform your decision-making around this topic, we were able to conduct a survey, and we administered the survey to our three primary stakeholder groups, students, secondary students, so grade six through 12, parents, but this was parents at all levels, so we included elementary, and then our staff, and this would be our school-based staff at all sixth through, grade six through 12, so all levels.
What was your response, Rhi?
So, we are in cellphone, correct? Okay, so we distributed the mid to end of January of this year, 2024. We had 5,251 parents respond, we had 24% of our students respond, and we had 45% of our staff respond. And I should also note, you got a slew of attachments from me. And within those attachments, there is a presentation that was provided for a different session, but it has a much more of a breakdown of those questions and then the response rate, and you can see by level. If you have any questions about that, you know I'm always available to, I just keep it at high level for you right now. So, moving on, we, these were our survey questions. So what were the top three ways to improve our current regulation? So what we saw here is no cellphone, we gave categorical options, and we allowed people to choose, and we didn't restrict to just one, we allowed you to choose as many or as few as you thought were relevant. So, the top three were no use at all, that would be our staff, 75%, and our largest proportion of parents said none at all. Students were in favor of incorporating into lesson plans or incorporating into class via educational applications or platforms, and I can see our students were in favor of that.
That's funny that the students were about incorporating into lessons and educational apps, but the teachers weren't. And they're the ones who are doing the lessons.
Yeah, and what you're going to see as a theme is there really is inconsistency among the stakeholder groups, so.
Well, I don't think it's inconsistency, I think the reason the kids want it is exactly why the teachers don't.
I also am convinced there's that many applications that are on your cellphone that are necessary in any class.
That you could use on your phone.
Unless we're providing cellphones to every student, I don't see how we can incorporate it into lessons.
Definitely Google.
Okay, so we also asked, are students currently held accountable in the perception of the respondent regarding their cellphone use? The majority of students, 70% said yes, students are held accountable. Parents were less sure, it was a three-item choice, yes, no, or unsure. And the staff were, there was a lack of consensus. Okay, so concluding the takeaways here from the survey research. As I mentioned a moment ago, there is a lack of consistency across the three stakeholder groups. We have differences with students and of course with the staff and the parents. Perhaps this is indicating that there's a lack of clarity surrounding the expectations for the use of cellphones in school, if they're permitted at all. And then we started to get into the areas of inconsistent enforcement of the consequences and inconsistent application of discipline for what would be the stated violations.
That seems to be a consistent theme, is that inconsistent?
Yes.
Enforcement.
Inconsistent enforcement.
It's a theme.
Inconsistent, then it's ineffective, yeah. So our recommendations regarding student cellphone use for your consideration, the first is to simplify the regulation, to make it very clear when and if cellphones are permitted during the school day and under what circumstances. And then, again, the resounding theme is you just mentioned, Ms. Ranzel, promoting the consistency in the enforcement of the consequences to those violations within school and then across schools.
So did you, did you look at middle versus high since they have different?
Yeah, so that, yes, we did, we did, in that companion, you'll see a breakdown, you can see the responses by level.
Did you see a difference, I mean, there's a different, there's a different.
There's a different rule.
There's a different rule for middle versus high, so I'm just curious whether you saw a difference between middle versus high, given that middle can't have their phones on at all during the day, whereas high school students are allowed to have their phones during the day.
Do we have any feedback on the impact that rule changes had on middle school, teachers admin?
I've only anecdotally.
You know, because the rule is stricter, are we having more kids getting in trouble for it, or are we, because we block?
They're still getting in trouble, but it's a lesser number. I saw it on the, our student discipline thing, it is a lesser number, but they're still getting it.
Well, I think we're never going to eliminate kids getting in trouble for cellphones, I don't think.
It is less.
Other than the anecdotal, I don't have anything that's really compelling, clearly, data.
I was just curious if there's a difference in terms of, because it's not the same.
It's a good end of year question for us to definitely ask, because, I mean, especially towards the end of the year when kids' behavior sort of ramps up, to know, hey, was this one of those ramped up things, or is it otherwise?
I mean, presumably we have the data for when the survey was done, we just have to look at the two different groups to see if there's a difference. At least with the students, with parents, you might not know because parents could have kids in both grade levels, but teachers, teachers, if you have the information about what grade level we teach at.
See if we can drill down a little bit and get your answer to that.
So my concerns are also related to the inconsistency piece and applying consequences for cellphone usage. So, I mean, I keep seeing comments and stuff online from teachers and people that are, even from parents that have said, if you institute a cellphone ban, I'll just tell my kid to, you know, ignore it or whatever, I'm sending my kid. So, so that doesn't help us either.
But then they also have the watches.
Well, that's true too, but, but when, when there's that level of open defiance that we're trying to do something proactive, but it's people already, I mean, these were in conversations around what kinds of suggestions do you have for us to consider? And it's, well, if you ban the phones, my kid's coming anyway, I'll just tell them to, you know, violate, whatever, but, right. So, so for me, it's, it has to be consistent, and I don't know, I don't even know what the consequences are now. Do you know what I'm saying, like, and I do hear there are.
We need a production, after we firm it up, we need a video.
Yeah.
And I'm serious, like, the thing that, that Mr. Texted.
But I think we need to declare our expectations.
Well, it, it sets the tone and it sets the expectations, and it also lets the parents know what is supposed to happen and what isn't supposed to happen, so if you ever need to hold the school accountable, because listen, I know my kid got whatever, whatever, well, that didn't happen, or that did happen, you know, but I think, I think a video, I love a production.
Yeah.
I think a video is a good thing, and it, like I said, it just tells us what we're supposed to be seeing, what we're not supposed to be seeing. And some people watch them.
I mean, I thought our regulation was pretty simplified.
It is.
I mean, like, simplify the regulation that's already pretty simple, I mean, for middle school, it's pretty clear. Your phone is off from the start of school till the end of school, period.
There's a gray area with high school.
Yeah.
That's, administrations I've talked to have said that they feel the gray area in high school has made it difficult for them to be strict with borders and boundaries and that sort of thing, so they definitely are looking for us.
Am I mistaken, did we not say last year that we were going to chime middle school as sort of like the pilot of it? And then move more into high school this year?
Your numbers have gone down, I mean.
Once, in middle school.
In middle school, yeah.
So, so then that to me.
Maybe we just need one rule.
Yeah.
Right.
Your school, your phone is off from the start of school to the end of school.
It's working at the Phoenix Center, I mean, it's just the distractibility thing.
Yeah, I don't care.
If you looked at one of her surveys that, it's not on this, but it was in one of her attachments that she gave us, all three classes, student parents and teachers, said what's the problem with cellphone? Distractibility, like, that is the number one thing. And, you know, kids, obviously, and I think it was like 60% of the kids were saying, yeah, the cellphones are for social media and making videos, and no, that's not what happens during school day, so, yeah.
So, are we, well, we would be well within our rights if we took the phone for a violation to say the parent has to come in and pick it up.
Can we do that, legally?
Yeah, we can do that.
Like, you need to come in, pick up the phone, your child was, was in violation of the code, and so now you will come in, pick up this phone, you can have it back, but your student cannot. I mean, to me, those are the things we need to start putting into place in order for us to really start getting at the root of this problem. Because otherwise, it's nothing but disrespect for the rules, they don't care.
To manage the kid that can have it, to the kids that can't have it, it will be a nightmare for administration.
Say that again?
To manage, if you say, you're going to come and get your kid's phone and they can't have it back, to manage which kids can have their phone and which kids can't have their phone back is going to be a logistical nightmare.
If it's taken, then your parent has to come get it.
Right.
Yeah, or guardian or whoever on your list of people.
But then come back to with it the next day.
Right.
That's going to be the hard part, like, who's going to.
So, I was going to say, actually, going back to what Ms. Kai was.
No, 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 but.
Going back to what Ms. Kai was saying, I also love a good media video, and I feel like if there is production, it should like obviously have students in it kind of like representing what the like regulations are, like when you can use your phone, when you can't. And then, I also feel like, rather than, I feel like an optimal video, kind of like have it during like the whole like beginning school orientation that way, it's a feeling that's like viewed by like across the schools, like across middle schools, elementary schools, and the high schools especially because like that's really, it's really not even elementary school, unless it's middle school, but really like it is high school, that kind of like the problem really gives crisis in. And, yeah, I think like a video orientation would be really nice, I feel like with the cellphone policy as well as the dress code policy, those would be like really key, like.
They still bring them in.
Those are effective for kids' age, right, like for high school kids.
I would like to add to, because we're discussing about the teachers or administration taking their phones away. I believe that would be a tad bit of an issue, especially with the older generation of kids, especially in the high school. Having, taking students' phone away, it also depends on the teachers, because sometimes students don't feel like, you taking my phone away is a fair thing. Maybe they were just doing something and the teacher took it away, it's going to be a very big issue, especially in high.
But you can't have it on at all.
Right, so if you can't have it on at all, and it's on, there is no issue, there's no blurry line, it's just blurry. But it can be used as another, like, it can't be used as a discipline for something that doesn't relate to having the phone on when it shouldn't be. Right. So, so I, I get what you're saying, that teachers might use it. So, right now, our line, our line of clarity is blurred, so we're trying to clarify that, like, it is off when you walk into the school building, it cannot be turned back on again until whatever the bell rings, you can turn it back on the second it rings. But if it's on anywhere in between those hours and someone catches you, it's mine.
Can we implement the caddy thing, because for IB students, we have caddies where we have to bend the phone, so can we just do that?
So I do, do want to point everybody to the second bullet point, which is as important as setting whatever expectation that you are going to set. I will say that, that any kind of substantive change, not dissimilar to the one that we made at middle school, although amplified at the high school level, this is what administrators will do for a period of time. They will not do classroom observations, they will be engaged in this for a period of time while they are norm-setting. And there is a resource component here to enforcement that we are not resourced for. So, there, there is some thinking through some of the unintended consequences that, that are going to come with this as well as you contemplate this over the next several weeks.
Okay, but how does that fit with, I'm going to carry it. There's a consequence of not dealing with the problem too.
Of course, of course.
Right, and our attendance, our discipline, and our scores are all reflecting various things. So, to say we're not resourced to deal with our primary mission.
We're not really resourced to deal with every day.
But I also think that that's part of the problem, which is, we, we have to set a rule and it has to be followed, we have not done that in the past. And because we've had the, there's, there's too many problems, not enough people to handle them, I get all that, and I, hopefully in the future, we can remedy that, but we can't not address this, it has gone too far, and I think we've seen too many implications.
Negatively.
Yes, of what is happening here. When we get a hearing where, you know, someone has been texting a friend in first period to make sure that their phone video is ready to go for a fight that's going to happen in, you know, 20 minutes, I'm sorry, we're responsible for all of that. So the policy has to be very clear.
Or they're amping themselves up all day on social media, bullying, or about a situation that was said, that, you know, it's just such a distraction in the day.
Now, hold on, because Julie had one more thing to say, and I wanted to make sure.
I also want to say that about like technology, the classroom environment for like lesson plans, I think that technology and like education can be very stimulating. And because like we have Chromebooks, I think it's just like, rather than like banning technology, I think it's rather like finding like alternative means on their Chromebooks since we aren't able to use our home.
Yes.
I agree.
Good point. Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that, it's part of the process, I don't have a street we did that. But, but you can, you know, you can make plans for rendezvous with your Chromebook too.
That's all monitored and we have paper trails. That's all monitored, and we have paper trails.
Right, it's like, it's like.
At least at the high school level, at the middle school level, they cannot, so.
Right.
But you eliminate that communication and that escalation that tends to happen from the start of the day to the end of the day in some cases.
All right, who's ready to talk dress code? Oh, I'm sorry. It's Healy, I apologize, you're right next to me.
No, it's okay, I'm just observing. Um, I haven't heard anything I haven't heard before, but I'd say, if we're going to do something, we need to do it fast, so that we can get it in effect and plans in place, procedures, and, and however we're gonna remedy this, is to get in for the, the code of conduct for next year. So, if, if, I would agree, or it sounds like the board is somewhat in consensus that we need to do something at the, the high school level.
Yeah.
Do you think we need another work session on this, or do we want it on for?
You'll see this in a couple ways. So, the schedule, what it would look like moving forward is, you have a governance meeting on Thursday where the code of conduct will be discussed, this is a part of that. Then you will have your May work session where you will get a review time of the code of conduct, and then up for first review, also in May, and adoption in June.
Okay, so it's, and that, that would be with, with the change in the high school.
Is that enough time?
It's plenty of time. Yeah, so you, you still have about sixty days worth of.
Okay, good.
Of movement before a decision point and an opportunity to edit over, really, the next sixty days, uh, if you wanna make some substantive changes.
So, what, what we're, we're really gonna address the student use of the cellphone, it's really gonna be more in the regulation or in your arena?
Correct.
And how the administrators are gonna handle it. I do think we have to be very, um, careful about the burden we're gonna place on the administrators if we are going to, in effect, confiscate the phones, because not only is there, you know, an issue of potential liability, we don't know what's on those phones. It, we just have to be cognizant of that, and, and maybe that's something that, that, you know, Dr. Taylor can bring back to us, recommendations on, you know, the, the, the action. I mean, we can certainly, you know, have a policy, whether you can or can't use the phones, but, and how it's gonna be enforced. I would, I would think that's more in the, um, you know, the administrative arena.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
And, and I, and that's something that, that the administrators, I'm sure, will, will wanna have some feedback, because that has been one of the, the biggest pushbacks we've had in the past, is not wanting to be responsibility for the potential liability of taking a phone. And there, there may be ways, I'm not saying we, we shouldn't do it, or should do it.
No, no, I know that, but.
But we need to be able to, to know how we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it consistently, and there is going to be safeguards there to protect both the administrator, who, who confiscates the phone, as well as the, you know, the, the family whose phone, you know, it belongs to.
So, I, so I, I was just gonna say, so it makes sense to talk about a waiver process in place. If you want your kid to have a phone, they're gonna waive, screw it.
We are.
Well, then, so to me, you're, you know, we talked about a total ban, and people, you know, lost their minds, so we want to walk it back to see what we could do to support, like, some of the parental concerns, some of the issues that we have going on with the kids, and the buses, and even scan, so we can do that, but you're gonna have to give a little too. You're gonna have to agree that we're doing the best we can to keep your kid safe during the school day, you're gonna have to provide support with that. If your kid is caught breaking the rules and that phone is taken, you're responsible for that, because you were the one responsible to tell your kid what the rule was during the school day. So, I, I'm pontificating, but that's my opinion.
No, but the parents, yes, would be responsible for the child, unless the child is an adult over eighteen. But what, what I'm concerned about is the, the, um, responsibility of the administrators and the additional burden that's gonna be placed on them, and how do we, you know, protect them from potential, um, liability, that's all. I, you know, we're, we're on the same track.
No, I, no, we agree, yeah, no, we totally agree.
I don't think we need a waiver, I think once we have a, a, a policy, it applies to everyone.
Yeah. What about, um, you know, some of the stuff we've read about what they've been doing, is it Albemarle, Charlottesville, other places where they actually have bags that kids put?
That's what I was telling.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, concerts are even doing that, and I was just saying that.
Yoder, is that the Yoder?
It would take the, it would take the owners of the, of the administration from physically handling the phone and putting it in, like, one of those locker, individual locker things, where the kid still has his phone, can't access it, the only way they get their phone accessed is to go back to their administration at the end of the day to get it unlocked.
Yeah.
So, but then we're gonna have the administration, at the end of the day, have to unlock.
It can be anybody, I, I mean, whoever they want it to be.
It's a lot of phones.
Well, let's leave that up to doctors too.
I'm just.
Right.
But it, it won't be for every student, it won't be for every student.
I'm just. I'm not, I'm not, listen.
No, no, I hear you.
I, I don't like cellphones for kids, my children don't get them until they're over sixteen.
Yeah.
I just don't understand how, you know, a high school administration, I don't know who's unlocking all those daggone bags.
Well, who knows how many it's gonna be, probably.
It would be, everybody who has a phone would have a bag.
No, no, only for the ones who get in trouble with their phone.
Oh.
Who was it used?
Would get, if they, if they.
You're right.
By the rules.
They keep the phone, it's in a bag locked, and they hold on to their phone, and then at the end of the day, they have to go get it unlocked.
But only the children who don't listen.
Get in trouble.
Rather than taking it away from them, they can just keep it, but it's locked.
Yes. They can keep it, but it's locked.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna take a scissor and cut the bag open.
That's one of those bank bills.
No, I don't, yeah, I don't think you can.
Alright.
Auntie, uh, ready for dress code?
Dress code?
Yay, alright, so the third of our, the meeting.
You can't wear a cellphone, right?
You can't wear a cellphone.
Nobody knows that you're there.
And watches.
Okay, so just as we did with the prior two aspects, we're gonna present to you here what's the, the legality, the, the code, the requirements, and the regulation. There's a lot in here, um, we attached to, again, one of those attachments that was attached to this presentation, is the specifics of what you have currently in our policy, and, okay.
So, is this what we have, or is this the state law?
States.
Okay, 'cause that, this has changed a little bit in terms of head wraps, things like that.
Right, and what we, what is actually written into ours is in your attachment, if you wanna see.
Right, sure.
So, for the, the, the research focused on our division, this, we actually did two, uh, more of a qualitative aspect with a focus group, um, and we did a survey, just as we did for the cellphone. So, what's nice about that is we get some numeric data, and then we can delve in a little bit more to get some more of the nuance that we can only get when we actually have a conversation. So, those focus groups were conducted with students in the secondary level from, um, grades middles, all the way from six through twelve. All students were invited, we had a range of participation, um, from as few as ten all the way up to close to fifty. Okay, so this is specifically getting into the results. The first primary finding is there's inconsistency, just as we saw with the dress ca, uh, the cellphone, um, regarding the students, parents, and the staffs of those three stakeholder groups in terms of their level of awareness. Um, the survey results were neutral, so this, this survey was conducted a little bit differently, they were conducted at different times, so we made a change in the methodology. So, this was, basically, it's a Likert scale, so the statements were written, and then the respondents were to indicate their level of agreement on a five-point scale. So, that's why you're seeing them presented slightly differently from what we did with cellphone. So, the survey results were neutral for all three. What that tells us is there is, and we don't really have a good sense of whether people are feeling like they are aware or not. Um, the student focus groups revealed a wide consistency in knowledge, that's where we really were able to understand that the students really don't have, um, a general consensus about what is contained within our dress code regulation. Um, we heard very, ranging from very strict to very lenient, um, all within the same school, and of course, certainly across schools. Um, so what was the largest perceived benefit? Well, it allows for the individual self-expression of the student, and then we asked a question, are students currently held accountable? And the majority of the students said yes, seventy percent. Um, parents were unsure, and lack of consistency, very similar to what we found, right, when we looked at the, at the cellphone. So, uh, shouldn't students be held accountable? We asked that question. The majority of students said no, seventy-five percent. Parents said yes, sixty percent, and staff also reported yes, at seventy-three percent. So, clear consensus in the adults, differing from our students, and should, how should?
But, but the students don't know what the rules are.
Right, yes, I mean, it's a, you know.
But don't make me have it.
So, then, and we, then we asked how should students be held accountable?
Which is why they shouldn't be held accountable. The laws know.
Just to, to make a footnote again, if you want to get into the specifics of the questions that were asked, and the individual responses, that's in your companion, you have some document. But the largest proportion of responses across all three groups were in favor of conversation, conversation with students, so whether it was a teacher or an administrator having that conversation with the student, and then also a conversation with the parents. So, the largest proportion across all three groups, all three stakeholder groups were in favor of conversation in terms of accountability.
I like how the students are like, no, don't talk to my parents.
I, I got this, right, yeah.
But very encouraging that they wanted to talk.
So, again, a common theme conclusion from our stakeholder research within our division, um, there was a lack of awareness regarding the specifics, a lack of consensus among the three stakeholder groups, and, again, common, the inconsistent enforcement of the consequences and, and the discipline for the violations, both within school and then certainly across schools. So, tying to that, our recommendations, communicate and educate all the groups about the specifics of the dress code. We can't enforce and have expectations if we don't know what we're asking of them.
Yeah.
And then promoting that consistency in the enforcement of consequences to violations, so addressing both of those aspects. So, this presentation, when we looked at discipline, when we looked at cellphone, when we looked at dress code, summary of our recommendations. First, to communicate and educate the three primary stakeholder groups regarding the expectations for all three. Secondly, to promote consistency in the enforcement across schools and certainly within the school. Um, and then, they, as Dr. Temple mentioned, there will be some other changes to the student code of conduct that will be forthcoming after the reconvene session.
When you say other changes, is it gonna be related to these three things, or?
Maybe yes, maybe no, it kinda depends on legislation that gets adopted.
Okay. Okay.
If it isn't adopted by the time the school year starts, is it next year?
I know, I lowered it before.
Should be going one.
Yeah, I wish, yeah, it depends on the legislation and what happens, so.
That's an emergency protocol, right?
Yeah.
So, I think, as a, as a parent of a high schooler, the thing that is most frustrating to me is I have to sign a permission slip for my child to attend a homecoming, and the dress code for homecoming is stricter than what it is for my child to attend school. She is not allowed to, um, expose, um, her upper part or her midriff to go to homecoming, but that's all fair game at the, during the school day. So, whatever the, like, I don't necessarily, I mean, I personally have my own opinions.
Are we talking about inconsistent consistency again?
Yes, so, like, whatever is decided, I have my first, you know, obviously, my personal opinion, but the will of the board, they should always match, like, at, under, across all.
I'm pretty sure that most girls should not wear tube tops or midriffs, just, oh, sorry, I think it's just, you know. So.
You think it's what?
I just think they shouldn't. Mrs. Ronsky used to wait for me at the end of third period, at the end of the hall, and send me home every time, because I had a midriff top on her altar top.
Well, Ms. Ronsky needed to mind her business. But would you have turned out as good as you did if she wasn't there? No, I'm just kidding. So, so, I, for me, you know, I, where I stand on this issue, I think it's, uniforms are the only way to go, is, shh, cover your ears, don't listen to this part, because, you know.
She will not be cool anymore.
I will not be cool anymore after this. I mean, I, I, I think it just gets rid of all of the, the issues that we're having, but I'll, I mean, we'll talk about this, I'm sure, at the governance meeting as well too, but,
Yes.
you know, there are two or three things that I think are worth noting, that I have a person that came to me after they were in one of our high schools for a meeting, and said, they, they literally left without having the meeting, because they were so uncomfortable with what was being worn, that it was, it was, it was, it just didn't feel right to be there, so they left. And it's not because it's a pervert, and it's not because of whatever, he just, it just was very uncomfortable, so that's super telling. And I never forget a kid that I used to work with, and this kid came into work at a, at a dog kennel, but he came in for the interview in a three-piece suit, his mom made him put on his Sunday suit for that job, and he, he got him probably as he was walking in the door, because his mom told him, you go for the job you want, not the job you're actually going for. And so, I think we tell our students a lot, this is their job, being a student is your job, and then we hold no expectation for what that means. And that is, that's a failure on our part for them, because.
But I think that's antiquated thinking. My son makes six figures at NASA, he wears a baseball hat, and swam hands to work, and he's a highly professional, and he's gonna keep satellites falling and killing us.
I mean.
So, your clothes don't necessarily make who you are, and they don't, they don't determine how you behave, but what they do is, older folks do judge us based on our clothing, and that's really inappropriate.
Uh, I, I don't know, I mean, maybe it is, maybe it's old fashioned, I don't know.
It is. It is old fashioned, and I'll tell you what dress codes do, especially to girls who have shapes like my children do, is they get picked on by staff, and staff doesn't even know it. But they can be, like, the, my, my daughter would wear the same stuff her best friend had, her best friend has a flat behind, my daughter doesn't, and she'd get dress coded. The same size.
Uniform changes that.
My daughter would, my daughter would wear what she wore, and they're told, oh, you know, you can't wear that, because your breasts, or whatever, but her friend, who hasn't developed yet, can wear it. Same outfit from Target. I hate dress codes, that's just me, I don't think it's fair.
My reaction too is a little bit of bigger battles. So, are we doing cellphone or dress code for this next year? What I'm hearing is that.
I don't hear anything on dress code, I hear only recommendations on dress code.
Okay, good, then leave it the way it is.
Other than, let, make people know what it is, maybe people understand it, they'll wanna change it.
And I do, do agree with that, but it's not necessarily worth the fight, because it is a cultural expression.
Unless it's nobody understands it, there's no request to change it.
I resent it, Mrs. Ronsky sent me.
Yeah, I mean, my.
But code of conduct and cellphones.
When my daughter was in high school, I'd come in the back door when they called me, and I'd drag every girl that was dressed just like her to the office and say, call their parents, too.
So, you gotta, you got a couple of landscape things to consider. Um, in general, students know that they should be paying attention to their teachers and not on their phones in the middle of class. They generally know this, and that if they are engaged on their cellphones, that they are, that they are. That they are probably not doing what they're supposed to be doing, and they're, they're not following through with the instructional program. What the data reveals, and I will say that this was an extensive research project for Dr. Schutz and Dr. Temple, um, extensive research project that involved many focus groups and surveys, is that there's a lack of understanding, and that there are some steps that you can take to mitigate the dress code issue by having greater clarity. Literally posting the dress code in a visible place for people to see it would be a great start, um, because you do have an existing one that has been longstanding without a lot of modification, because the text of the dress code does, is, is not really objectionable, when you look at it, um, it, it does require some promulgation, that's, that's an administrative task for us to do. So, I think you do have two different landscapes. Your one landscape is that students in the cellphone space, there's a distraction to the learning environment, it's inherent. Students are knowledgeable about this distraction to the learning environment, there's some addiction tied to it, and some real challenges with that, versus there is a very clear and genuine subset of the, the other issue that lacks a lot of clarity and lacks a lot of information. So, um, I think that, that in our recommendations, um, as you're looking at these two issues, their survey data was remarkably similar in terms of the outcomes, but, but the landscapes themselves are very different, and, and that needs to be taken into consideration as governance meets and as a, um, modifications are made to your student code of conduct.
Well, there, there doesn't seem to be a basis to even talk about a change of dress code, since nobody knows exactly what it is.
Exactly what it is.
So, if we do clarify it and make people understand it, perhaps at just time next year, we're looking at potential changes, but we can't change what we don't know is.
It's because we don't really have any restrictions. The restrictions right now are safety concerns, like, you know, wallet chains, I think, because in, like, CTE classrooms, those can be an issue, um, and then, of course, you know, anything that's abusive, offensive, hate speech, but apart from that, there's no restriction on student dress right now, at all, for regular attendance.
But we do, do restrictions on.
See what we do.
There's, there's a lot going on.
I mean, I see the fashion at the college level.
That's different, I'm just gonna say, that is different. I go to the colleges too.
There's probably a lot more pajama pants at the college level than there is at the high school level.
And there are definitely midriffs, and there are definitely.
I would like.
Go to high school, Ron, we need.
I will ask one request, that our student reps, um, think about these issues and make sure that your opinion is known, um, when the board comes back in May.
Yes.
And they, they know how you feel about these after talking to some of your peers and some of your friends, I think that's gonna be really important.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
They know uniforms.
Alright, we're going to move on to the topic of, uh, the Cliff Farm property, is that Mr. Towery and Mr. Fulmer?
So, like, more like, just like a, more like. Okay, we're separating you two.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, so, there's, I'll just kinda get it started, we just, um, kinda following up, we've given some, you know, kind of brief updates on the Cliff Farm property um, over several months, whether it was the, um, school board retreat or, um, other avenues, so, uh, school board asked us to kinda come back in April and just give an overview of where we stand on the Cliff Farm property, any updates, um, from kinda county, um, perspective as well, and what's going on there. So, uh, Jason and I, uh, Mr. Towery and I, there are a short presentation with some of those bullet points, and then wanted to share that information and then see what additional questions you had, and if we don't have the answer to that, something that, um, we'll find out and get back to you. Uh, so, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Towery.
Okay, yeah, um, so, um, as Mr. Fulmer said, this, there's kind of a couple different things going on here, we've looked at the site. One is obviously, um, we're in land search mode for. We've looked at the site. One is obviously, we're in land search mode for, we've been in land search mode for elementary sites, and now middle site, middle school site. And so this is obviously one that's come up on the radar in some of our discussions, is for potential use. Also, the rezoning that's going on up along the front, along Leland Road, has our attention as well, as that impacts essentially the developability of our site. So there's a total of a little over 180 acres in all of Cliff Farm, but when you get right down to it, there's about 50 to 70 that is very, what we would say, very easily buildable within the urban service area. Everything there in red is within the urban service area, which is where, again, public water and sewer is not necessarily available, but is, is in theory allowed to be extended to by the county water and sewer utility. In this specific situation, and I happen to have some background knowledge on this one with my previous role over at the county, the sewer situation is probably the most difficult to solve. Essentially, getting sewer up to this property, we'd have to probably go all the way back almost to Conway Elementary School to tie into reasonable sewer, and that would be via a pump station enforcement out there. The current sewer capacity of Hickory Ridge, which is the large residential subdivision right next door to it, is, is really not great. There's, there's a series of old pump stations through there that would probably need some upgrades. And by the time you did all that, it would probably be cheaper just to build the sewer and head up the road. Water's in a little bit better situation. There is a 12-inch water line roughly around the intersection, if you're familiar with the area where Morton Road and Leland Road intersect. But again, we would be needing to bring water up through the site as well. And then, as far as the road network is concerned, and we'll look at this a little bit more. For, you know, an elementary or a middle school, the existing road network is, it's not unreasonable. I'll, I'll use that, I'll, I'll use those words. It's, it's not the greatest. Leland Road in that area is, is two-lane, you know. It's a narrow two-lane road, typical of what we see in a lot of rural areas of Stafford County. At the very least, I would think that VDOT would like to require some sort of what we call wedge widening and safety improvements along that section of the road.
Do you think that this Leland Road is different than like the ones, the road in front of Falmouth though? Like, as far as widening and whatever?
Well, in terms of overall volume, yes, it is different. This is definitely a much lower volume section of road.
For the moment.
For the moment, yes, yes.
And also keep in mind, expectations from VDOT have changed since Falmouth was built.
Okay.
Where are the existing schools relative to Cliff Farm? Where are the nearest?
Conway would be closest.
And then Grafton.
Grafton and Dixon.
Grafton, Dixon, Smith and Drew, and Stafford High.
Falmouth is not too far.
Stafford High is very close, actually.
And this is Drew.
Drew.
It's Drew attended, so.
So, long and short, we would have to, have to do some sort of road improvements. It's a little unclear until we define exactly what type of school facility we would have out there, you know, that we could really get down into the nitty gritty. Obviously, doing road improvements for an elementary or even a middle school site, an 1,100-student middle school would be different than a, say, a 2,200, 2,300-student high school, right? Where you have a lot more student drivers as well. Oh, and one other thing, there was a question about what are we doing out there in terms of yearly maintenance right now? We're basically just trying to keep it to a reasonable cut from time to time, but it's, it's pretty infrequent, and we spend about $5,000 per year on that.
Per year?
It's safer than that. Please don't do it.
Did some of the cross-country teams choose to practice?
Not used to.
Actually, that was why we were still maintaining it, and they've just chosen not to, not to use it. But we've actually heard from kind of neighbors of that area going both ways, saying, hey, cut it, don't cut it. Actually, at the end of last year, a gentleman reached out and asked us to stop cutting because they thought it was disturbing the wildlife, so we'll probably even cut back on that a little bit. So, but through last year, we were cutting it routinely, and then kind of during our, our last cut at the end of the season, before the winter, it's been, kind of felt like we were disturbing wildlife a little too much. So this map here kind of gives you a little bit closer in look at some of the site constraints we were talking about. That peach area, if you will, in the middle is what we would kind of have designated as being the very buildable area. Once you get past that, you start getting the steeper slopes, and then eventually, especially up on the right, top right-hand side, you get into a lot of environmental constraints up through there. You also, you see that light blue overlay up there. That's part of the airport overlay zone for Stafford Airport. Okay, that's, that is not the same as the Dogwood Airport, which is smaller, private. It is actually technically, at the moment, in the flight path with, with Dogwood. At one point, our understanding is that Dogwood was actually approaching from Stafford High side. And Stafford High, the school's asked, hey, could you maybe approach from the other side? So this would potentially be something for us to consider, although it's not, it's not, there's nothing technically wrong with it. It would just be something we would want to be aware of as we, as we, if we consider moving.
Can you just explain your, I mean, AP2 NOC, what am I looking at here? What does this mean? AP2 NOC?
Those are the airport compatibility zones.
Okay, and they're, okay, so then what I'm looking at is the blue is not compatible?
Correct. And the C, the purple, if you will, there, which is actually underlying that peach color as well, it's considered compatible. From, now, this is again for the Stafford Airport.
Right, right.
Zone, right. So we're right on the edge, but we're in the compatible zone.
Can you remind me how many total acres the parcel is?
188, I believe.
And I do remember, you know, this was my old neighborhood. It was originally purchased to be a high school site, and then can we readdress why that wasn't able to happen? As far as, it was something with land suitability, but I can't remember.
So it was gonna cost.
Because of the water sewer.
It was gonna, because of the water sewer and everything.
It wasn't any urban service then.
Right, it was gonna be 60 million of land, site prep, and then 60 million for the school. For 120 million, we could have had a high school.
Wow.
Yeah, should have done it.
At the time, I feel like I remember something about the airport.
Oh, she's talking total. You're talking total.
Yeah, but this is when, this is when we built Stafford.
And weirdly, it would feel compact on the 50 buildable acres.
Yes.
Because of your 188 acres, less than a third of it is really usable.
Right. And we spent $5,000.
Unless you went with zip lines, I'm gonna tell you I went there. It's really.
So, and I do want to clarify on that point. It's not to say that we couldn't, couldn't make the other areas usable, right? You're just getting into more grading, more site development costs, right? So there's, there's just costs associated with it.
I just wanted to kind of get a, know what's up, and that's why. And then, and then also to see, like, 50 acres sounds like a lot, but 50 acres, how, how much? You know, so what the rest of that space looks like. Is it usable for anything? Like, is it the other parts of it? Could it be green space? Is it, or is it not? Nature trail?
Yeah, I mean, so, yeah, you could have one heck of a cross-country course. Or mountain biking. Seafaring.
There's magic words of nice county stuff.
And Missy, we, we did look at this when we were looking for a site for High School Six. This is one of the sites that we looked at, and kind of narrowed it out, but narrowed. But we really wanted to focus on an area of the county. We didn't have a school, and so that's why we focused on that. We first, all right, let's look at the property we have, which just was the only property. And, and Westlake at the time was in discussion, too, because it was a potential proffered site. But narrowing those out at the time, because it wasn't really in the zone of the county. So that southwest quadrant is where we targeted for High School Six.
Right, because we have all these kids that are being bused to Colonial Forge when Stafford's going much closer. And it makes sense to put the school over in Hartwood, because that's where the kids.
I have a question. I know it was 60 million back then to develop it, the land. Do you guys know how much it would be now? Because I know it's different since it's in the urban.
Not less.
Not less.
So, so running water and sewer out there and some of the road improvements, I would say you're probably in the, let's say, 50, 20 million dollars range for, for the infrastructure improvements needed to, the enabling cost for the site, what we kind of talk about. It could be a little more, a little less, depending what we find. Some of that will depend on the next topic here that we'll talk about with the rezoning. But in terms of the overall site development costs, again, once you get into that peach area in there, pretty standard site development through there would, would be pretty typical around the area.
And there's no exit road there. It's only in and out.
In and out. Okay, so let's talk real quick about the proposed rezoning up at the front, and that's the area that's highlighted there in the magenta, because there's been some questions about kind of what's going on there, and what, what has staff.
Is the proposed rezoning on school board property?
No.
No.
Not school board property.
Okay, so that's, is there, is there the red?
Yes, the red.
So in front of it, or, or below it?
And in between is residential?
South.
Yes.
There's a couple of single-family, larger residential lots, your properties, if I'm correct. So the, the proposed rezoning, 141 single-family, age restricted. Planning Commission recommended denial back on, almost about a month and a half ago, in late February. And it is scheduled to come up at the Board of Supervisors meeting in May for consideration. We have been monitoring it. I will say that in terms of, one, some of the benefits that, that would bring for our property would be that it would make a lot of these water and sewer improvements for us, right? So they would bring water and sewer back to basically our property's edge and provide some, a, a lot of the backbone of the infrastructure that would be needed for our site development. So that would substantially decrease our costs. In terms of some of the road and transportation improvements, they really haven't proffered much or shown much in that way. That could be something that perhaps the county board supervisors could impress upon them, hey, how about some safety widening out here on Leland Road, something of that nature? That could benefit us longer term. But again, until we fully understand what the school board's intention for the Cliff Farm site might be, it's a little hard to determine on the transportation side how to develop out Leland Road in that area. I'll say, you know, that from my experience dealing with these types of things, I, I do think that some fairly minimal improvements to Leland Road would be necessary. You know, some wedge widening, you know, you're talking a couple hundred thousand dollars in some wedge widening, you know, a couple hun, or 100, 200,000 dollars in some turn lane improvements. I don't think we're in the millions. I think we're in the hundreds of thousands for some of the transportation right there along Leland. Now, if we look to punch out a second road somewhere and make another connection somewhere, then, then we could definitely be increasing costs. But as long as we're just talking about improvements along the Leland Road area, I think we're in the hundreds of thousands, not in the millions.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question? Sure. So one of the things, I did get to go and tour this property. It was actually kind of fun, thank you, Mr. Allett. But the, the pump station that they're talking about putting in for the, that would supposedly help us a little bit, they didn't turn, they did not release the plans until December, but it was found in January that those, that pump station would not be adequate enough to support the schools. It was only going to, they, they mathematically used an equation for 51 homes. And the county also agreed that that was not adequate. So what are we doing? It's, I know that it's in this flux space right now, but what are we doing with conversations even to ensure that? I, I guess what I would like to make sure is that something isn't done that we can't undo.
Yeah, absolutely. So I've had a few conversations with the folks at utilities, reminding them again and again, right, like, hey, if this goes through, you have to keep in mind the school's interests of developing the site back here, that that pump station ultimately would need to have room for expansion and upgrades to accommodate, you know, the flows from, you know, some, some sort of, you know, larger, some sort of school site, right?
Right.
So they're very well aware of that. They've consistently said that that is something that they have in mind. But some of this is, you won't really be able to design that until, it won't really be able to fully kind of figure all that out until they get into a little bit more of the details of the design. They're still in the rezoning stage a little bit right now. And also, it's gonna, again, you know, chicken and egg, right? What are we doing, right? Is it a 2,000-student school? Is it a 1,000-student school, right? In terms of, which, at this point, we're not building a high school here. We know that, at this point, I would say. Just said that out loud. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe you all changed your minds at some point, but. Not High School Six, you know, we know that. So, but, you know, in terms of, you know, the, does that, does that answer the question in terms of the student code of conduct?
Because the other part of it that I would worry, I mean, you're talking about potential wedge widening, road improvement, turning lane, those types of things. And, and I've been there, and I see, again, where the, the, the front project would be. And my concern, and we're running into this in other areas, is what do we have, what would we have to do, or could we preemptively, I'm thinking no, for supporting what we would potentially need? That wouldn't require us to have to do something to a landowner, homeowner later.
I think, so to answer your question, I think really what, what we need from the school board, as soon as we reasonably can, is get some direction in terms of the intended use for the property. I, I think that we can, again, generally stake out a position of, you know, a 1,000, 1,500-student school, and keep us in mind, guys, as you size the pipes and pump station capacity and so forth. On the transportation side, it gets a little trickier because.
Someone's property is gonna be right there.
Right, but it's, 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 you, you kind of get into these different thresholds with, with, with VDOT in terms of how you size the roads and so forth. But I think we can generally stake out that position, and we have with the county. They, they're aware of that.
Okay.
We've talked to them again this morning in our joint land acquisition committee. Again, reminded them. Deputy County Administrator was on there. Head of Code was on there. The planning, the main planner, Mike Zarath, who's been dealing with this, was on there. So they're aware. They're very keenly aware of our interests. But once we actually say this is what we're gonna do, then that's what is really gonna drive the power design.
The problem seems to be, though, that we don't really need a middle school in that area unless we were to put Drew there, but I think there are better sites for Drew. And I'm not sure, you know, maybe an elementary school at some point, but then you've got Grafton Village and Conway and Falmouth, and you.
All have trailers, though, too.
Yes, they do. And they do. So, so, I mean, what would be the most beneficial use for us? Because we're looking, we're looking at our 10-year CIP for, for middle school design, so the only thing that makes sense would be an elementary school.
Yeah, I think it's definitely does.
Because any high school is gonna be, have to be up north. So. So just for clarification, though, because when we met last time, we were in agreement that we don't own enough property to be given, so, correct?
Right.
Right, so is that what you're asking us to do, or are we, I mean, because I don't think we can futuristic.
Your direction can be nothing.
Okay.
Do nothing.
Because, I mean.
That, that is a direction.
And, and do, do what, what we decide to do at this property doesn't have an impact on how they vote on what this, other than we don't need any more people. No offense.
Other, other than it would, again.
No, it's a workforce task. No offense to people.
Other than it would improve the, our, improve the school's property, improve the value of the property if water and sewer were brought there. Absolutely would.
But, but the, I mean, currently, they've declined to approve the zoning, rezoning.
The Planning Commission has recommended denial. It has to be officially discussed.
But the Board of Supervisors has asked for this property, so.
So, so, alls I'm saying is, if, it would seem to me that they're gonna be ignoring the recommendation of their, which may happen regularly. I have no idea. But it seems like, for us, the only issue is if this rezoning happens. You've already communicated that we want to make sure that the sewer pump station will handle 1,500, potentially 1,500 seats. Well, other than that, I don't know what we need to do.
Would we have to pay pro-rata fees if they did bring the water and sewer?
If they brought, if they brought the water and sewer, we would probably not have much, as much, well, we would still have some pro-rata fees that we would pay typically, yes. I understand your question, yes.
I mean, if they're paying to bring it to their site.
Right.
Right.
They would probably offset a lot of their pro-rata responsibilities by the construction of that sewer and water.
Well, I would, I would say hypothetically that we should advise them that this site was purchased for schools, that whether it's a high school or an elementary or middle, they should plan on approximately 2,500 students on there.
they should plan on approximately 2,500 students on there. I mean, I, I mean, it would not be unusual, I'm not saying it's not in the plan right now, but, but if we're gonna keep the land and keep it for a school, we're not gonna put one school on a 55 to 80 acre site. So I would, I would say that the potential future use, just like in assessments where you have to do the highest and best use, you know, what is the highest and best use of this for Stafford, it's either for a high school or an elementary in the middle. So either one of those would give you, what, about 2,500 students? And use that for planning purposes in terms of the capacity we would need for a sewer and water. And when it was purchased, there was never an expectation we'd use it all for schools. We knew there was a lot that was not gonna be buildable. And the, the thought at that time was that we could perhaps, you know, share some with the county for parks and rec, you know, even though we couldn't build, there could be some recreational uses put on there and, but it's, it's never been pursued because it just hasn't been, you know, on the radar.
Sure, yeah. And, and too, you think with, you know, Conway and Thelmoth and others being schools right around the corner, we'll have rebuilds on the horizon for those. And I'm thinking about Conway in particular, I don't know how we're gonna rebuild that school on the Conway property right now. It might be that we, perhaps, if you were to rebuild Drew here and then you set aside 20 or 30 acres for a future elementary, you know, something of that nature that you consider.
I mean, we, I mean, we have to start out saying there is not a site on the CIP. However, you know, we're holding the land because, you know, there could be a potential future use for it. And if we were to use it, this is what the expectation would be.
I think that's, I think that's here, is that to protect future interest.
That's, that's what I want.
Because county, I mean, county assets are, school assets are technically, you know, taxpayer asset, are taxpayer assets and they're for the money assets.
So we need to do our best to protect those. But we're not making any statement about...
Putting it there now.
Wanting this development there or anything like that.
No, no, we're just saying, if it went through, we would want the county to, in effect, protect the school's future interest by making sure that the infrastructure would at least have the capacity to be modified to, at a reasonable price, you know, to meet our needs.
We could just move forward on our budget agenda item and then give us a few minutes to have some food before dinner for our seven o'clock meeting. We're going back to...
All right, we'll go for it, yeah. All right, so the first big thing is, we do owe a big thank you to our board supervisors and state legislate, straightened state legislators. The legislature did a great job for us this year. Granted, that's been tempered a little bit by the executive. We, we came out of the legislature and the general assembly this year with a fantastic state budget. The supervisors came very close to, to their advertised tax rate and proportionally accounted for public education to, to the maximum of their advertised tax rate and what they had said. And we owe them a thank you. And so that's a good place to start. Our recommendation, this is kind of like the bottom line up front, and what we're gonna ask the board to do this evening, is to pass a provisional budget to get us from point A to point B. This won't be the final budget because the state isn't done passing its budget. Once the state does pass its budget and we actually have a very firm number, whatever that number is, that we will come back and, and make adjustments and bring that to the board for consideration. We feel pretty confident with the numbers we're gonna present to you tonight for where we are today. It's a conservative look, but it does give us the chance to issue contracts and does give us the chance to move forward, and that, that's really what our aim is for today. Some huge successes that we have to report from the general, excuse me, from our board supervisors, having to do with four projects moving forward. This is a big move. In the last three years, Stafford schools and the board of supervisors have been able to come to consensus on school construction projects, and that is just wonderful, that we are moving ahead with four projects. Another really significant move, and, and Mr. Towery left and Matt is here, they can certainly take a bow for their role in, in helping to share the very hard reality that we have with major maintenance and getting us closer to funding our major maintenance needs for this year. It's not quite exactly what we would need year over year, and it was, a lot was cobbled together with one-time resources, whether they be bond financing or cash, but, but we'll take it, we'll take it. And, and having additional funds set aside for emergencies, you know, this is, this is good financial management, this is good fiscal management, this is a step in the right direction. Love to see more of that in cash and less in financing because we don't want to pay banks using tax dollars, we'd rather pay our citizens and our stuff to get, to get actually taken care of, but we're, we're at least moving in the right direction. So some adjustments, and, and Chris and I will pie on this, but, but this is really where we're kind of hung up at the moment, is the revenue side. The, the 13 million in, in local revenue that was adopted by the supervisors is in fact $2 million less than the request from the school board and what we need. We feel pretty good about the governor's proposed budget plus the estimate that we came back to the board with. We feel like at this point, that's a very conservative number, which is good. And the legislature, although they added an additional 3 million, it's important to note that this is potential. And it's that potential question mark coupled together with the $2 million cut from the supervisors that is, gives us a little bit of heartburn. And here's what we don't want to do. We don't want to adopt even a provisional budget that we then have to go back to our employees and say, remember that pay raise? Whoops, just kidding. So what we want to do is be able to hire adequate staff to staff our classrooms for our growth, give our staff the pay raise they deserve, and then if we get additional funds from the legislature, which is looking likely, and that's a very positive thing, is that it's looking likely, that we can then come back and address some of the other additional needs that we have. So, next. Not recommending any changes to our non-discretionary funds, because they're non-discretionary, so that is what it is, I think we've talked about that to death. To our discretionary funds, we broke these out into two big categories. We made some really tough decisions with staffing. We had adopted staffing standards and then we walked back some immediately. And so some of this is the walk back of some of our staffing standards to the tune of many positions. We, it is gonna be our first recommendation that we go back and look at compensation and that we go back and look at staffing when additional funds avail themselves because this is, this is a pretty substantial price to pay to balance a budget. But we feel like this is a get us from point A to point B conversation anyway. So all broken out, we had our staffing standards, then we had the deferral of our year, our year one implementation, then the deferral of our year two implementation, and so that accounts for the changes that we've made. And then the reductions of our standards, which actually increase class size, which is not awesome. And then the full implementation of phase three for our licensed staff. We are walking back 1% temporarily to balance the budget for today. It is our aim to add that back when we have additional revenue from the state, which is looking likely and very positive, to do a full phase one of our service scale. And because we're making an adjustment to phase three, there's a proportional adjustment to our instructional support, and then we're gonna hold about a million point one in advance, just in case the sky explodes on us. This is still representative of a 9% increase for our paraprofessionals, an 8.7% average increase for our service scale, and a 5.2% increase for our license scale, which is still way better than what the state is offering this year.
But let's just average.
Average, correct.
So there will be people who get less and there will be people who get...
That's right.
Well, I just, I'm just...
Yep, but that, that is...
We're transparent.
Make it, make it, make it, we were that way at the start of this.
Sure, but sometimes people listening may be like, I didn't get 5.5, right?
Correct.
This aligns five and six. How does this compare to your initial recommended budget?
This, this is spot on, yeah.
So this is better, right? Or it's either closer?
This is the same.
Yeah, it's, it's the same.
So basically, what we're doing is we're rolling back to your initial recommendation, but adding the license scale up to phase one.
And the two really, the service scale.
Service scale.
Yeah, so, so the two really big adjustments here is that the revenue mix looks different than it did in January. We have less local revenue from our board of supervisors and more revenue from the state. That's good.
Potentially.
Potential. Well, even, even what we think is reasonable, even from today, even with the governor's proposed amendments, we feel like we're in a pretty good spot. So the things that's different from the superintendent's proposed budget is full phase one for the license, for the, for the service scale. So our non-licensed staff, full phase one, that's the difference.
But we weren't, we weren't, on the, on the license, your recommendation was not for full.
It was half.
It was proportion.
Okay, that's why I just wanted, so this really is just, it's adding the support service staff.
Staff.
That's the phase one.
Yes.
That's a different, the main difference between your initial budget, which was approved by the board.
Yep, so it's an improvement. So we are better today than we were a few months ago.
Okay, I just, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to...
So could you just remind us of the adjustment to the phase three of the teacher, of the license scale that's just like above 15 years, correct?
It, it is actually from step zero all the way through, but, but what we are doing, and if you, and we've been kind of going five-year chunks at a time, adjusting the scale, which has a huge impact on our experienced folks who kind of suffered with us through the housing market and everything else. So we, we have done step zero to 10. We are going now step zero to 15, which is doing 3% per step, which has dramatically adjusted that slope. But everybody north of 15 gets bent up pretty significantly because they've been kind of suffering in silence for, for decades on this, and so that's a, that's a huge bump. What we would like to do, and we'll come back to the board with this when we have our final state revenue numbers, is look at how we can close the final gap with that license staff. So, next.
I, I just, so, two things. So, and tell me if I'm in the weeds up here, because I'm, I'm off there.
You're in the right spot.
I'm into this, but revert ratio back to one teacher and three paraprofessionals per acre, so...
I'm gonna go back to some slides.
We did this for, for the cost savings here, right?
We literally did this to balance the budget, and so that's what, that's what these cuts are right here. So before we even brought our, our budget to the board of supervisors, we made these reductions.
So what he's doing is adding more work for a special education teacher as opposed to adding another teacher to that room to balance the load.
So none of what we have at our available, like, none of our available funds currently that we're working with adjusts any of this or fixes any of this.
How does this impact to what, is this a reduction on what we have currently or a reduction on what we proposed for next year?
It takes into account growth, so, you know, we're, between turnover and growth, no one loses any jobs or anything like that. So there's no reduction in force or anything along those lines.
But we, we're stretching thinner.
We are stretching thinner, and that is a great way of, of looking at this, is that our very thin coverage of staffing just got thinner.
Thinner, okay. And then the proportional adjustments to the instructional support scale and whatnot, because I know it's confusing for a lot of people.
Yeah.
Can, can you help me again understand? We're moving them up, our goal is to make sure that we bring them into a percentage rate of the teacher salary.
Correct, 100%.
This doesn't do that yet?
No, it does.
Okay, so this does do that.
So, so your paraprofessional scale is there to mirror everything that happens to your teacher scale. So as your teacher scale gets bigger, so does your parascale get bigger.
Okay.
And, and so that's a, that's a huge step. So with us backing out a percent on the license scale, it backs out half a percent on the, on the parascale.
Okay.
Because they're half, 50%.
Parascale is half.
We're, we're feeling pretty good at the moment because we're like a 9% average on the parascale, so that's a big improvement for them and long overdue.
Can I take the one?
Yeah.
So we're, we're just making choices.
That's right.
I mean, if we did the staffing standard reduction, yes, in, in effect, we did that, so we could, we could increase the, the salaries for both the license and the, and the service staff. And so it's, it's just a matter of choices.
Right, well, when we were at the retreat, we all, to a person, put our stickers on compensation if they are...
No, I, I, I agree with it, but I just don't want it to look like we're just, you know, these are cut, so that we could better compensate or more adequately compensate.
Correct.
Can you help me understand just again the 1.1 million? We are using that or are we holding that in case?
Here's, yeah, that's the, that's the...
It's our get out of jail. That's right. Because the state budget's not finalized yet, let's wait until the state finalizes
before we spend that 1.1 million.
Yeah, but let's not commit it yet, because if we commit it, you know, there's the orange jumpsuit kind of conversation, then nobody wants to...
We keep it in the checking account, pretend it's not there.
So right now, we're down, so if we did, if we put this back, we're...
So you, we, no matter what, you are going to have to come back and adopt a budget, no matter what.
Right.
We have to go to jail for all of this.
But you have to wait for the state revenue so that you have a top-line number to take a look at. Since we don't have 100% confidence in what that top-line number is, it's good to have a portion of your budget set aside, just in case. We don't think we're gonna need it, we actually think we're gonna end up okay, but just in case, let's hold it in advance.
And then my actual real final question on the 3R list, because we put a lot of interest into our fields and our, like, our track stuff and our, are we including that in the 18 million, like, 3Rs, how it looked like some of those fixes?
We're coming back in May.
Yeah, we're coming back in May with your 3R list.
Okay, so that's where we're looking directly at that, so that's not for today's meeting?
Right.
That's a discussion.
So to, to finish this up real quick, so that you guys can grab a bite in between the meetings, this is what your proposed expenditures is gonna look like, this is not different than what we've presented, and in the documents that you have, this kind of answers your advance question, is that we're working with the, it's just a projection conversation, and so we, we'd all rather not go to jail, and, and that's kind of the, the story behind that. So our bottom line is, let's sit tight. Our, our state, our state legislature did a great job in getting us to this point, they've got some work to do with the executive, and then, and hopefully we can conclude this before June, fingers crossed. But, but this is basically where we're at today, so.
Are we good?
Yes.
Dinner.
They were very, very close to the advertised tax rate, but that wouldn't have done everything.
Thank you very much to Colonial Forge High School. Thank you to Colonial Forge High School's Army JROTC. Members of tonight's color guard include Logan Riley, Ethan Donaldson, Lillian Hogs, and Angela Goodman. The instructors for the Colonial Forge JROTC program are Mark Strong, Lee Wertham, and Philip Roberts. Thank you all. Ms. Hall, if you could take the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Dukku?
Here.
Ms. Guy?
Here.
Ms. Halstead?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Oda Togan?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Ms. Sigmund?
Here.
And Dr. Warner?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Great, so we have no electronic participation tonight. Is there a motion and a second for the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, we could cast our votes on the agenda. Ms. Halstead? We approve the agenda with a motion of, a vote of seven to zero. Moving on to the consent items.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the amendment that we pulled January 4th minutes and bring them back next time.
Okay. Second. Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion on that change? Okay, cast our votes. That motion passes unanimously. Announcement of administrative personnel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm delighted to make several announcements this evening of new administrative personnel and some familiar faces in new offices and new locations. Though this first one is a little sad for our Rock Hill Elementary School community, it's a little bittersweet for them. They are gaining their principal in a new capacity for the school division. I'd ask that Terry Rivero please come down. Terry Rivero, Ms. Rivero, will be joining our Office of Human Resources and Talent Management as our new Assistant Director supervising staffing. A native of Stafford schools, Ms. Rivero has served as the principal of Rock Hill Elementary School for the past nine years. Under her direction, Rock Hill has become a Common Sense Media and Purple Star certified school. Ms. Rivero has also served as an instructor for Foundations and Teaching, a program designed to serve our early career educators. Prior to this role, Ms. Rivero served as an Assistant Principal at Falmouth Elementary School and then at Rodney Thompson Middle School, where she was awarded Assistant Principal of the Year for Stafford County. She began her teaching career at HH Pool Middle School and then moved to Dixon Smith Middle upon its opening. Ms. Rivero was named Stafford County Public Schools Teacher of the Year at both schools, Pool and Dixon Smith Middle, and we're so proud of her. Ms. Rivero earned her Bachelor of Science degree from James Madison University and her Master of Education degree in Educational Leadership from the University of Mary Washington, and now has her new home in this building as her Supervisor of Staffing and Human Resources Assistant Director. Welcome, Ms. Rivero.
Thank you.
While you're taking your picture, did you bring anybody with you that you want to recognize this evening?
Yes, my husband, Brian, is here.
Thank you, husband, Brian.
Thank you.
We'll give her back to you on the weekends in the fall, but between now and then, it's going to be a little busy. Very excited to announce the appointment of a brand-new principal in Stafford County schools. Would Nikki Sims please come forward? Ms. Sims will be the new principal at Park Ridge Elementary School for the coming school year. Ms. Sims has been a part of Team Stafford for the past six years, first as a teacher at Wide Water Elementary School and most recently as an Assistant Principal at Conway Elementary School, where she has served as the, for the last four years. In this role, Ms. Sims has worked with teachers to improve student achievement and reduce chronic absenteeism. Ms. Sims began her teaching career in Richmond City Public Schools before Team Stafford stole her. Ms. Sims earned her Bachelor, Bachelor's Degree in Elementary Education from Virginia State University and her Master's Degree in Educational Leadership from Liberty University. We are thrilled to have you at Park Ridge as a patriot. Thank you, Ms. Sims.
Thank you.
We'll snap a pic real quick, and if there's anybody that you brought with you other than your very supportive leadership team from Stafford schools.
Of course.
I see your current principal here.
That's right, I have my Conway family, I have Kayla Knutson, Kayla, I love you, and I also have my amazing husband, Keeson Sin.
Thank you, Mr. Sims.
Thank you, guys.
Our last appointment this evening is for an Assistant Principal position. Will Katie Boligets please come forward? Thank you. Ms. Boligets returns to Stafford County as the new Assistant Principal at Anthony Burns Elementary School. For the past two years, Ms. Boligets has served as an Assistant Principal in Manassas City Public Schools. Prior to this role, Ms. Boligets was an educator with Stafford Schools for eleven years, a special education teacher and an instructional, excuse me, an educational diagnostician in the Special Education Department. She has worked at all three levels in Stafford. Ms. Boligets began her teaching career in Pennsylvania before she was nabbed in Stafford Schools. Ms. Boligets earned her Bachelor Degree in Psychology from Virginia Tech, her Master's Degree in Special Education from Marywood University in Scranton, Pennsylvania, and her Educational Leadership Certificate from the University of Mary Washington. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you very much.
Katie, I think you also brought a special guest with you this evening.
I have two, my son Nolan Boligets and my dad, Dan Mulhern.
Fantastic. It didn't take much to win Son of the Year, did it? It's pretty good. Madam Chair, this concludes administrative appointments for this evening.
Wonderful. Moving on to awards and recognitions.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Taylor. This evening, we'll recognize students, staff, and community members that epitomize our values of students, integrity, respect, community, opportunity, and excellence. Will Scott Flath and Farida Crowley please join us at the podium? Annually, April is designated as Workforce Readiness Month, emphasizing the importance of identifying opportunities for workforce development to prepare students for success in life after high school. By proclaiming April as Workforce Readiness Month, Stafford Schools reaffirms its dedication to providing students with the skills and resources necessary to thrive in the workforce and contribute positively to society. Accepting the proclamation are our work-based learning coordinators, Scott Flath and Farida Crowley, two essential connections in providing students with workforce readiness opportunities. Thank you, Scott and Farida, for your work to inspire and empower our students so that they are prepared to excel. Will Tanya Mitchell please join us at the podium? Tanya is on her way, we'll come back to her. Will Colonel Michael Brooks, along with Lieutenant Colonel Jonathan Hudson, his wife Elena, and their children Grace, Gabriel, Hannah, and Jack, please join us at the podium? The school board recognizes the significant contributions and sacrifices made by military families and their children. Highlighting April as the month of the military child, Stafford Schools professes its commitment to supporting military children. Stafford Schools, with a high number of military school-aged children, actively participates in initiatives like the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children, facilitating seamless transitions for military families across state lines. The board reaffirms its dedication to providing exceptional care and education to military children through collaboration with various stakeholders, including school liaison officers and community organizations. By proclaiming April 2024 as the month of the military child, Stafford Schools emphasizes its commitment to ensuring excellence in education and support services for military children facing unique challenges. Accepting the proclamation, on behalf of all military families are Colonel Brooks, the Commander of Marine Corps Base Quantico, and U.S. Marine Lieutenant Colonel Hudson and his supportive family. Thank you to all our military families for their service, sacrifice, and support. While we are discussing our military families, tonight, I am proud to, proud to let the community know, we have started a brand-new Military Families Advisory Committee. They have their FOIA training this evening, and if you are a member of our new Military Family Advisory Committee, will you please stand? Thank you. Will Erin Dowd, Amy Snyder, and Erin Cunningham please join us at the podium? Stafford Schools acknowledges the impact autism may have on social, learning, and behavioral skills. With increasing awareness and diagnosis rates, it is noted that one in forty-four children are diagnosed on the autism spectrum. While there is no cure, early intervention can significantly improve outcomes for individuals with autism. By designating April 2024 as Autism Acceptance Month, Stafford Schools reaffirms its commitment to raising awareness and fostering acceptance of autism within the community. Accepting the proclamation are Erin Dowd, Amy Snyder, and Erin Cunningham from Heather and Field Day School and Rocky Run Elementary. Thank you, ladies. Will Dee Ryan, Ashley Welch, and Anna McConnell please join us at the podium? Stafford Schools recognizes the vital role of school libraries and librarians in promoting education and fostering a love for learning. School Library Month, celebrated nationwide in April, highlights the importance of school libraries and the dedicated library professionals supporting students through reinforcement of information literacy skills. School librarians build quality library programs that contribute to students' growth and development while promoting excellence and equity in education. Stafford Schools reaffirms its commitment to supporting and promoting the mission of the school libraries in the district, ensuring they remain vibrant centers of knowledge and exploration for students, through the designation of April 2024 as School Library Month. Accepting the proclamation are our lead librarians, Dee Ryan, Ashley Welch, and Anna McConnell. Thank you, ladies. Oh, we have more librarians. If you are a school librarian, will you please stand? Will Casey Conroy and Virginia Murphy please join us at the podium? Stafford Schools recognizes the importance of fostering positive relationships with local communities, including businesses, agencies, faith institutions, and community organizations. The significant role provided by the community to students, staff, and families enhances educational opportunities and prepares students for success in various aspects of their lives. Stafford Schools appreciates the work businesses and organizations put into improving educational outcomes through meaningful partnerships that enhance student education. Furthermore, in recognition of the community's support, the school board designates April 2024 as Community Appreciation Month, formally acknowledging the Stafford community for their continued support of schools, students, families, and the broader community. Accepting the proclamation this evening are the Rappahannock Area's YMCA Member Engagement Manager, Casey Conroy, and the SAC Operations Director, Virginia Murphy. Thank you, ladies. Was Ms. Mitchell able to join us? School nurses play a crucial role in ensuring the well-being and academic success of students, daily investing in their health and safety. School nurses serve as frontline professionals promoting wellness, coordinating care, and acting as liaisons between families and healthcare providers. The board expresses gratitude to school nurses everywhere and designates May eighth, 2024, as School Nurse Day throughout the school division, recognizing the invaluable contributions to student well-being and academic success. Accepting the proclamation is Tanya Mitchell, the school nurse at Edward E. Drew Middle While Ms. Amory, Ms. Amy Ivory, is not able to join us tonight, we want to recognize Edward E. Drew's principal, Amy Ivory, for her recognition as a leader in the local community by the National Coalition of One Hundred Black Women, Inc. This prestigious nationwide recognition highlights her dedication to advocating for all students under her guidance, ensuring they are prepared to excel. Mrs. Ivory's commitment to student success and her advocacy efforts have earned her this esteemed recognition, reflecting her ongoing dedication to making a positive impact on the lives of those she serves. Mrs. Ivory, thank you for leading by example and for modeling our values of students, integrity, respect, community, opportunity, and excellence.
Thank you, everyone. Moving forward with our presentation this evening, annual report and recommendations for the school board, of the school board's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Committee.
Good afternoon.
This is a PDA, so just use your mouse, the wheel on the mouse.
Wheel on the mouse. Thank you. So, good afternoon, Superintendent and School Board. It does bring me great honor to be the Chair for the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Committee, and today we want to share really a few recommendations for your consideration. Within the presentation today, we're going to share the recommendations, the purpose behind those recommendations, and how it does align to the school board's goals and So as we were looking at true learning for all students, and we thought about it from a diversity, equity, inclusion lens, a couple of things that we know to be true is that all students can learn, they definitely can achieve, and they can meet the level of mastery that we want all kids to be able to achieve. When we looked at the performance, and we looked at the summative assessment data, summative assessment data doesn't necessarily capture the true performance of students, nor does it actually accurately tell us the story of our teachers. It's one snapshot in time, and as we look at taking action with data, is what we're going to talk about today in that recommendation, having really that holistic, real-time data on students at all times enables two things to happen, true data conversations and that level of cycle of inquiry that allows all education leaders, regardless of whether you're in a classroom or you're in an administrative role, to really utilize data to look at the root cause of the needs of students and put in interventions that can definitely be utilized, as well as really monitor the progress of those interventions so that you can really determine if it's the actual solution, is generalizable across the district. So it's really getting that return on investment, but using data to drive the conversations that we even have with students as well. So further first, recommendation, we're really looking at developing an infrastructure or leveraging existing infrastructure to collect and maintain holistic student performance data, enabling educational leaders to use the data to meet students' instructional needs. And it's really enabling having those data-centered conversations on what's working, what's not working, not necessarily from a gap perspective, but even for students that we really definitely want to accelerate their learning as well. And so using data drives the ability to identify where there's root cause for gaps, but also how we can identify solutions for students that have really demonstrated a high level of mastery and needs to go that extra step in their learning projection. One of the things that we do is we do have a sub-recommendation here as well, and it's really leverage and equip school improvement special, school improvement specialists within all schools to support educators' analysis and use of data to drive achievement gaps and mathematics and literacy. When we talk about the use of data, a lot of times it's overwhelming, not overwhelming from a level of capacity, but when we think of the everyday lives of a teacher and all that they encounter, their social workers, their mom, their dad, there's so much involved with the kids every day, that having that additional support that can help them utilize that data in real-time, and when we look at formative and summative assessment data, even working with teachers, how do you use that data conversation that you're having with kids to better strive and actually increase your instructional practices? Really utilizing data, how, when teachers are differentiating their learning and putting those learning groups together in the classroom, when, you know, you think about the old school, you call it centers, really how do you use data to frame that instructional pattern? And using existing systems if possible, or leveraging a new one. And the rationale here is, the ability to access and utilize data among educational leaders really enables the ability to analyze, strategize, and act, and that is the heart of what educators do every day, that is that cycle of inquiry, thinking as a researcher to make a difference for kids. So we go into recommendation two, and one of the things with recommendation two that we really considered is that there is a wealth of professional learning that's provided to ensure that all teachers, leaders are equipped to serve the diverse needs of students. And when you look at the population of students that serve, they're truly unique in this community. With that, one of the things that we did identify within that recommendation is the ability to establish, maintain, and utilize success measures and data to determine the effectiveness of the professional learning provided to educators. effectiveness of the professional learning provided to educators. And within that, measuring the impact of professional learning is truly integral to advancing equitable student outcomes, and that's one of the things the research states is that when you really measure the learning of the professionals, it really drives equitable access for all kids. And when we look at measuring, two key things is measuring behaviors as well as measuring results, and so is there behavior change based off the learning that they're provided? And did we actually achieve the targeted outcomes that we sought to achieve based on that learning? How do we see that in the classroom, and did the learning truly make a difference? And at points in times, by measuring the progress of the learning, it's not necessarily that the learning was ineffective, but there could be the need to have additional follow-up and just support to ensure that the learning manifests in behaviors in the classroom. So one of the things we really wanted to do is really look at how do these recommendations align to the strategic plan? And when we looked at goal two, support high expectations for academic performance, one way to really support high expectations for academic performance is really through the use and analysis of data and the ability to really do that root cause and determine what the needs are effectively across the board, and how do we really measure the effectiveness of solutions that we're identifying to meet the needs of students? And really by having that data, it does enable, when we talk about every student annual growth goals, when we think about high delivery, high-quality, rigorous, cross-curricular math instruction, and it's the same for reading within the strategic plan, is using the data to really tell the story and drive. And we know that a year's growth of a student may look different depending on that student's unique needs, but again, that data really does tell the story of how performance is happening every day for kids. We do actually have a few additional considerations for the committee, and these actually were not the main recommendations, but I wanted to make sure that we did provide the full spectrum of conversation to this group. I will not take the time to read each of these considerations to the committee, but really want to close out with the key point of this brief really is taking action with data. And so out of all the recommendations for consideration, what we do ask the board is truly to consider recommendation one, 1A, and recommendation two, and it's really how are we leveraging data across the board, and that is holistic, real-time data to drive instruction for all kids. And also with recommendation two is really looking at the performance measure and what I call is making success actionable for professional learning and how those behaviors are manifest and changing within the classroom. And we do think from that lens that all students will be served, and the academic performance that we seek for all of our students will be evident by using data to drive instruction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come back.
Come back.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Dr. Chase?
Yeah, thank you so much. That was a terrific set of recommendations. I just wanted to mention, I've mentioned this to Dr. Taylor before, I have a constituent who works with a group called Learning Heroes, and their big message seems to be parental involvement, and particularly this idea that, yes, you have this data, but often what the parent gets is a report card, and the report card says your kid has a B or an A, and the parent's like, my kid's doing great, but the data that you've got here is showing a more nuanced picture, and that isn't communicated to the parent, and then the parent can't be a partner in the conversation. And so I love this. I would also like us to make sure that we are engaging our parents, because most of the parents I know really want the best for their children, and that would be, they'd be a great partner for us, but I think this is fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. May I add one thing to your statement, ma'am? So I think one of the big pieces when you're engaging families with the data, oftentimes I think of younger kids, and you're reading on a level, let's say M, and you've got to get to a level P. Well, really, what does that mean as far as strategy? So when we were really looking at taking action with data, is helping teachers to really understand that we have the different grades, we have the different levels, but what is the skill that this child needs to be able to demonstrate mastery? And by having that level of data and truly understanding that, it changes that parent conversation, and so I definitely agree and concur with your statement and really believe by using that data, it can drive a different conversation so we as parents can also really strategically and intentionally help our children as well.
Ms. Holstead?
So I, this is fabulous. I have two, just two questions that I wrote down. So the professional learning, you were talking about how you measure the effect, like how that changes what they're, did you guys discuss like how you would measure that? Is it based on student performance? Is it based on people evaluating the teacher and their improvement in the class? How do we measure that particular part of it, like where that is? And then the other question is just, these other ones that are on this last page, I think are so fabulous, the additional considerations page, do we just want, like, do we not have time for enough goals, or we move them up over? I just, they're fabulous, and I don't want them to get lost. I just wondered what that discussion was.
So I'm going to start with additional considerations and then move to the main ones. So one of the things, the reason why we have the additional considerations here is because we really identified the priority is to really get that data. So when we were looking for data as we worked within our committee, we wanted to really evaluate, what's the effectiveness of the intervention classes? How are students reacclimating to their community? But from a holistic level, that level of data wasn't available. So when we were really looking at getting down to really that root cause analysis to further really analyze the additional committee recommendations, we identified the fact that we didn't necessarily have the data we wanted to drill deeper. Like summative assessment is so surface, but it doesn't paint the whole picture, but the ability at a higher holistic level, like each school may have different data that they're using, but at that central level, to be able to identify the effectiveness of strategies across the district, that's where we identify the gap. So not that these are not important, it's just that we needed that data gap to be plugged in order to really use the data to drive these, because one of the things that we're big on is return of investment, but we want the data to drive truly what that intervention and what that solution is. So when we really put those two things together, we can adequately say, yes, the data supported implementation of this, and this is the progress we made from that. And without the data, you're almost kind of guessing what that fix is, where we want it to really to be more spot-on and accurate with use of the data to determine this is what needs to happen. For the actual behaviors and results, one of the ways, we were literally looking at the Kirkpatrick model, we utilize that framework to determine those two levels. You know, the first two levels really looks at kind of how you do that kind of post-assessment with your, whatever learner comes in, but when we're looking at the behavior and the results, one of the things for behavior is really looking at, is there a class, like a behavior change of the professional, which does involve some level of, yes, definitely communication, but I do believe that it personally involves some level of analysis of if the behavior, the instructional practice that we provide an instruction on is truly taking place in that classroom. So if we're expecting like, you know, we say like the components of reading taught every day, and we provide the science of reading, and it went through the science of reading, and this is the training we provided our teachers, when I'm going into that classroom, now I'm going in to analyze, am I seeing the teacher provide the strategies that we provided in the science of reading in that classroom? And if not, what support can I give them to really supply the learning that we provided? And then the other piece is from a learning opportunity, and some of that does actually, the results does pull in that student data, based on what the actual learning is being, or the professional learning and how this is being implemented in the classroom, are students truly growing if that's what we were measuring? Sometimes it could be measuring not necessarily learning, but it could be a more functional goal that we're measuring, but it does boil down to, once we have that targeted outcome, are we getting the results from the learning? And that could actually involve measuring student performance as well.
Dr. Wonder, did you have something?
Just first of all, you guys did a great job. Thank you for all the efforts that you put into this. I do appreciate the recommendation for the data, the data analysis. I think that within the school, I think those, we're data-driven, but sometimes it's really hard to process, and I think that these are good recommendations. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
Madam Chair, I just want to point out, as you, as the board knows, but public may not know, each committee has a staff liaison, and the staff liaison for this committee is Monica Cortez Foreman. She's leaving us to go to the private sector, but she came back for this meeting, and I just wanted to give her a shout-out for her support of this committee over the last couple of years, and the committee did a phenomenal job, clear, succinct, direct, actionable steps for the board to consider moving forward, and just want to give that team just a huge shout-out. They've come a long way in a short period of time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we are going to hear our annual report and recommendations for the school board's Visual and Performing Arts Advisory Committee.
I'm going to introduce you. Hi.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Deirdre Haisley. I am the staff liaison for the Visual and Performing Arts Advisory Committee, and I am the new coordinator for Visual and Performing Arts for Stafford Schools.
Yay.
Thank you, Deirdre. How am I pulling up the next one? Thank you. Oh, well, that's coming up. I can get started. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Taylor. Good evening to the Stafford community. My name is Jimmy Gertzog, and as the appointed chairperson for 2024, I am here representing the Visual and Performing Arts Advisory Committee. Thank you. I am here tonight to update the school board and the community as a whole on the visual and performing arts work over the past year. I would like to ask any of my fellow members of the committee who are present tonight to please stand up. I think it's just my co-chair, my vice chair who's present tonight. Thank you for all your work. I would like to express my thanks to the committee members, you know, those who are present with the committee and whose terms have recently sunset. Thank you for their commitment and their volunteerism and their efforts over the past year. I would also like to acknowledge the support and guidance from our board liaison, Maya Guy. Thank you. And also to recognize former VPA Coordinator Anna Marie Bolino, who departed the role earlier this year, right around the time we were preparing for our presentation. And in light of that, I would like to express my thanks to Roxana Bandis Muldoon for assisting through the transition, and of course, extend my thanks and welcome to our new liaison, Deirdre Haisley. She has hit the ground running as we prepared for our annual presentation, and I look forward to working with her throughout the rest of the year. Disappeared on me. Our committee's purpose is to advise the school board on the arts education needs of all students throughout the school system, and to advocate on behalf of our students to ensure high quality, or access to high-quality, equitable, consistent, and vibrant visual and performing arts programming. Our mission statement drives our work to support all students. Our guiding star is that participation in the arts is an essential building block in the education of the whole child. In 2023 and early 2024, we set about to evaluate opportunities and models for implementing an academy-based specialty center, or pathways, model in the visual and performing arts, while strengthening the current Stafford County Public Schools programs of study. The committee continues to operate with an understanding that ensuring access to high-quality, equitable VPA programming falls squarely within the framework of the school system's strategic goals. And we focused our time and energy in 2023 primarily on the opportunities to introduce pathways centered on nascent high school six. Bolstering and fully resourcing the existing arts curriculum and charting the way for pathways, for a pathways model for new and specialized courses of study will enhance students' academic performance within the school system and prepare them and meaningfully broaden post-secondary opportunities. To that end, here's where we spent our time since last April. We reviewed regional models for specialty arts centers and pathways courses and identified successful programs and the traits that they had that brought them success. We guided the development of two surveys, one to graduating high school seniors this year and to sixth-grade art students in their visual and performing arts classes. We collected feedback from the community on pitfalls and stumbling blocks to achieving successful and durable VPA pathways program throughout the year. And we're also developing an industry and community partnership resource list that we hope will help aid us in building an enduring program. We made a similar assertion last year, however, it bears repeating. We do not believe a successful visual and performing arts education in Stafford County works without fully resourcing essential arts education sequences throughout the public schools' infrastructure, and this includes the courses of study seen on the screen. This is the courses of study that exist in, from elementary all the way through high school programming that exists today. So we used two student surveys to help guide us toward the types of educational opportunities provided by a visual and performing arts pathways program. Our targeted audiences were sixth graders and 12th graders. Surveys were conducted this past fall, and results were presented to the committee this past February. Our audiences were chosen strategically. The current sixth-grade class would be the first potential rising ninth graders with an opportunity to enter the new high school and new programming available. While the younger age necessitated more generalized questions, VPA teachers administered the survey during their orchestra, art, or drama class time. This ensured a venue for student questions or clarification. Graduating high school seniors were asked to reflect on their time participating in the arts. These are results from the sixth-grade survey. I apologize for the small size, so I will walk us through some of the notable examples on this. The survey had 1,375 respondents. Forty percent were in band, 30% were in visual art and theater arts, 70% in chorus, and 14% in orchestra. This is the sort of crux of the central question. Question four, we asked here and told the students, we are currently exploring different options for a visual and performing arts specialty center that you could attend in high school. This center will allow students to select courses and experiences specifically in art, dance, music, and drama theater arts. Which of these areas would be appealing to you? So students could select multiple options. The most popular responses were digital art, musical performance, so specialized performance in band, orchestra, chorus, piano, specialized specialization in acting, photography, and costume design, and studio art classes, as well as industrial and interior design. On average, kids selected three areas of interest, and close to 40% have responded that they might choose to participate in such a program. Critically, we also asked kids whether they would, whether participating in the arts outside of the school day, or whether, excuse me, whether they were participating in the arts outside of their school day. And it certainly caught our attention that 48% of the sixth graders, close to 800 of them, said that they do not participate in the arts outside of the school day. About half of sixth-grade students are only receiving structured exposure to the visual and performing arts in their school day. This was eye-opening for the committee. For the senior survey, we had similar, we had a smaller respondent pool of only 165 students, but it was certainly a self-selecting group. For those responding, 60% or about 100 of them were taking visual and performing arts courses in high school, and 60% of those had taken the arts for all four years of their high school career. So clearly they are devotees and very interested and passionate artists within the school system. The 12th graders also had the chance to indicate which pathways would be appealing to them. They included specialized performance, photography, music composition, digital art, acting, costume design. We did notice that between the sixth graders and 12th graders, there was a lot of similarities in terms of the areas of highest interest, the performance, the digital art, photography, and costume design. These certainly caught our eye, although across the board, there was interest throughout the offerings that we were suggesting to them. We asked seniors, if you could do it all over again, would you have been interested or participated in one of these pathways, even if it meant leaving your base school? 63% said yes, that they would, and only 15% said that they would not have been interested at all in such a pathway, if they could do it all over again. Finally, I want to use the remaining time to share some of the incredibly nuanced and thoughtful responses from our seniors that they shared with us. I have grouped them from, by general themes, and these are hardly the entire list of responses, so these are the seniors in their own words. I grouped them, for example, by expression of aspirations and career prospects gained in the visual and performing arts. Students said, experience and knowledge in the creative career was one of the things they got out of programs. Another said, I have gained a career from taking visual and performing arts course. Application to my post-secondary work, I would like to be a performing arts teacher. And then, learning skills that they gained to help with my art outside of school. Seniors wrote about skill development, both artistic technical skills, but also soft skills. Quote, "I have learned to not be so critical of myself and to just enjoy the things I love. I have learned to separate myself from professor." I have learned to separate myself from perfection and focus more on enjoyment. Of a longer response, quote, I have been, I have been taught to observe the details of the natural world, and it has made me more perceptive. I have learned the ability to follow and lead with not just words, but my actions. Seniors wrote about the role the arts have played in their maturation. Quote, the ability to feel comfortable on stage for any reason. Another said, more comfortable and confident in myself and my work. One acknowledged that it got me more sociable. They said that they gained a skill, friends, and the exhilaration of performing music. Another said, I've gained skill and discipline even at the point where it became obsessive, so I took a break. The seniors were also candid, quite candid in some cases, about some of the barriers to their success in the pursuit of the arts. Scheduling conflicts was a big one, the desire to have more choice, more optionality in their courses, the pressures of doing what they felt they had to do for college preparation, SATs, AP prep, IB, you know, certification, college applications versus what was always most fulfilling to them. Quote, if I want to take an advanced visual and performing arts course, I have to sacrifice my GPA. It's not fair that I have to choose between higher academic success or learning about what I enjoy doing. Seniors also spoke about the absence of the types of specialized pathways we are investigating. Personally, I think there should be a class to teach piano, but there isn't. Another said, the main thing that hurts my participation was moving, the moving of wind ensemble, which caused a conflict with chamber singers. And a significant challenge was mentioned in the lack of resources. This could be practice space or just the insufficient availability of instructors, mentors, assistant directors, or other staff resources. Quote, some instructors don't have proper spaces to teach in. My band director is in charge of such a large, a huge program. Quote, our theater classroom is a normal carpeted classroom, while all the other schools have actual black box theaters. On the topic of barriers, this was a takeaway for us in the committee. There was an expression from senior respondents acknowledging and expressing frustration about inequality, inequality of course offering, of choice, inequality of resources even amongst their peers at other schools, funding out of pocket for events, costumes, props, and usable practice space, and the lack of quality, up-to-date materials. To summarize, the highest-rated pathway specializations were digital art, photography, music, technology, and production, performance specialization, acting, costume design. Most of these ranked highly amongst both surveyed groups. Students in both surveys, though, did not always choose any overwhelming favorites, and there was broad support expressed for many potential pathways. The sixth grader showed us the school system is critical in meeting the needs of students for providing a well-rounded education that includes the visual and performing arts, with only half having VPA instruction in the school day. And seniors told us a pathway program definitely would have been something they would choose if they did it all over again. So they showed us the wealth and breadth of personal development even within their own high school careers and the career preparation that they acquired through the arts. They also showed us our biggest barriers, schedule conflicts, transportation, and inequality. The Visual and Performing Arts Committee will be taking on the following tasks in 2024. We hope to inform and guide the school board on three essential questions. We want to give actionable recommendations on what an inclusive and equitable application process could look like. What are those outreach efforts to appeal to a wider audience? What do, what do students not know about? How have they been proactively asked to participate in a pathways program? And then, the introduction and perform, execution of a lottery system and building trust in that process through accessibility. How might such a pathway or academy secure funding to ensure longevity? And then, which business and industry partners could support and provide additional opportunities for students with mentorships, internships, and other career opportunities? On behalf of the committee, I would like to thank the board for your support in supporting high-quality and equitable and comprehensive arts education programs for our students. We appreciate, I especially appreciate the opportunity to share our current work and with you and for your continued support with, for the arts in Stafford County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I find really interesting the schedule concern and how that would work with having a pathway, right? That if, if you want to be in the IB program, which is at Mountain View, but you also want to be on this arts pathway, you're going to have to pick, right? I mean, that's just, just the way it's going to be set up. And I'm also intrigued by this question of, do we have a lottery system? Or do we have a, an audition-type system? And that's an interesting question in terms of the whole equity piece and all of that. So I'll be very interested in what your committee brings, brings us in, in terms of what people are thinking.
Yeah, it certainly is the foremost conversation we're having internally about what our senses between an audition process and a lottery process. On your first point, I think that ideally, we would like to see, what we would like to see is a pathways program that is a gateway into something of an arts career. So certainly, there is going to be choices, but with those choices come flexibility because you're driving towards something that you will find meaningful and will contribute to your post-secondary studies, so.
Well, and as Dr. Taylor has often mentioned too, sometimes pathways teach you the pathway you don't want to go on, so who knows?
And we wouldn't be replacing performing arts at our other high schools. We would just have a more robust, so an IB student could participate in fine and performing arts at their base school, just not through the.
Madam Chair, the arts are for everybody.
It's an affirmation at every committee meeting we start with. We are supporting the arts, continuation of the arts in the schools as they are today. So, yeah, it's, it's something that we focus on and are conscientious of.
Ms. Randall, did you have something?
I just want to say one thing. I'm so happy to hear, like, photography. I feel like photography is such a lost art. And recently, like, my, my daughter's playing hockey, and they had a photographer there. And you don't realize, you know, what your iPhone's not catching, right? So I'm so happy to see this on the list of things because those cameras and the beauty of what you actually catch in that moment from a camera, you can't replace seeing that by, you know, the pixelated iPhone, whatever thing, so that makes me really happy. Also, piano, total lost art, and I, I mean, it's an amazing instrument, and I wish we could have one everywhere. That's all I wanted to say. I love the piano.
Dr. Warren?
Just, just, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'll just address one thing and say that the, it was interesting to me that photography ranked highly among the seniors, but the digital art was lower than the younger students, almost like that there was more interest in, in the physical medium and, and maybe in developing film and staging your shot. So I think that was shared a little bit.
I, I just want to say thank you for all the work you put into this. And I think the difference will be in the pathways program, whether you're seeking an arts career or whether you're seeking something. I took, I took wheel throwing and hand forming and, and photography courses between genetics and organic chemistry and analytical chemistry because it was nice to have that creative outlet. And it was, I think, helpful when I was in university. So I think for our students, I think that balance of arts is always an important aspect of their education, and I thank you.
An excellent outlet, yes, we agree.
And I want to, I also wanted to thank you and welcome, Ms. Haisley, to central office. That means I won't see her at Rodney anymore. She's been. They're sorry to see you go. I've actually gotten a message already asking why we took you. So thank you for your hard work on both accounts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, student representative reports.
Good evening, everybody. So Jennifer and I had discussions, and we decided to establish end-of-April goals, which Jennifer will go into later, but we basically have finalized our media takeover. We selected all our officers, and they are here with us tonight, and we'll be so excited to present them. We just want to kind of figure out how to highlight everybody countywide because we are like Stafford County Public Schools. We're together like as excellence. We don't just want to focus on certain schools. And yeah, I'll have Jennifer go into everything else.
Good evening, everyone. I am Jennifer Oritagun, your student alternate representative. And today, I will be giving you guys a quick little debrief of everything your student rep, Jolene Duku, and I have been working on this month. One of Jolene and I's primary objective going into our term is to give students a voice. And as we attended these board meetings, one of the main issues that we have seen so far is that there's a lot of information being discussed, information in which students don't tend to have a proper or thorough comprehension of. So with that being said, this might discourage or lend students to not being more engaged into our school board. So with that in mind, Jolene and I came up with the idea of having a sort of social media team that will help us tackle that issue. Working together with the school board, we were able to distribute an application to students who are part of their student government for our social media team. This group, which consists of four distinctive positions, a writer, a news anchor, a creative director, and a photographer, will collaborate with the school board and the student representatives to ensure that students fully comprehend the information being presented at board meetings. I will give a brief description of each of the roles to have a little better understanding of each of them. The student writers are asked to provide a synopsis of every meeting they attend along with captions for photographers' photos. The news anchor will be in charge of interviewing board members or other personnels that attend board meetings in order to get their views on certain topics. The photographer, that student will be expected to collaborate closely with the writer and be available to take photos at meetings and other important occasions that we attend. Last, but certainly not least, our creative director. The students will be required to regularly create posts for the Instagram that we just launched. I'm sorry, I didn't mention that. We were able to launch our Instagram account a couple of weeks ago. So our creative director will be posting on that for us on a regular basis. To close, I would like to express my gratitude to everyone who applied for these positions. As your student representatives, we consider it an honor to collaborate with such extraordinary students who have as much as a passion that we do to bettering our education system. With that being said, it is my absolute honor to introduce you guys to our social media team, who is sitting right there. We have Samantha Eugenio, who is from Brookpoint High School. She is our creative director. We have Kaylee Tapley, who is our news anchor. We have Maya Samuels, who is our writer. And then, unfortunately, our photographer wasn't able to make it today, but his name is Owen Hoy, who is from North Stafford, and he will be in charge of taking all our photos. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. We should have Jolene go down there.
The count promotion at, on Insta, oh, @studentsofstafford on Instagram.
So while they're taking the picture, again, that's @studentsofstafford on Instagram, so.
Are you all set? Are they all set? Thank you both for your efforts and all of you for joining the team. Moving forward onto our citizen comments. Three minutes are allotted to each speaker or group. Speakers are encouraged to provide a copy of the comments to the board clerk. Speakers shall identify themselves by name. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chair. Ms. Hall, if you will call people up?
Yes, ma'am. We have eight individuals signed up, so I'll call the first four. The first will be David Fowth, Shamgar Connors, Molly Denham, and then Logan Limbo.
There's no colors here? That's all right, you can cut me off. My name's David Fowth, Antietam Loop, Stafford, Virginia, in the Alquiad District. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Taylor. First of all, as a member of the CTE Committee, thank you for recognizing Ms. Crowley and Mr. Flath. His name is so similar to mine, I always get it messed up in, in the minutes, but they have been phenomenal on the committee. Their information and their, just their knowledge for promoting CTE has been great. So thank you, thank you, thank you for recognizing them. CTE Committees, these presentations are so valuable, so informative, so informational. Just as a follow-up to today's working group session, really around the cell phone policy, we did hear just in the earlier presentation about the value of data. I think Dr. Chase mentioned about, you know, I caught your point earlier about it's really, you know, it's a parent's responsibility. Students don't quite have that capability. One resource I would highly recommend that you take a look at is a new book that came out by Jonathan Haidt talking about the anxious generation. Just came out. I mean, I think his recommendation to actually create a cell phone-free school is something that should be seriously considered. I did look at, I downloaded all of the forms. I went through a lot of the parent spreadsheet. I think every pushback on those from the parents could be easily addressed. I think his book covers all of them. So I think it's, you know, as you think through it, as you look at just the research. I mean, I know this board looked at research, significant research during the COVID. You looked at scientific research. So this research that is out there that's saying the effects of cell phone, the effects of social media, the issues that you're having with bullying, the issues that we're having with mental illness, image, all the things that we're saying. Highly recommend that you take a look at that. And I think it's, you know, I'll probably catch hell for it. You'll catch hell for it, but I think it's a bold step to take a look at that. I'd be interested, I don't think talked about it today, but, you know, at Stafford Middle, how have the grade scores gone up in this past year? I know you talked briefly about, you know, the, the violence and, you know, the challenges with discipline, but have the grade scores gone up? Have you seen a change in that? Have you seen performance gone up? And I think if that's a driving factor, both are a win-win. So I highly recommend that book. Highly recommend some bold steps on addressing the issues and being at the forefront of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I don't know how much time I used.
Eighteen seconds.
Hey, everybody, I'm Shamgar Connors. I live in Stafford County. I'm out of school, I have a child in the school system, and I wrote some notes, what I want to say today. Before I wanted to start, I want to say I wanted to give some background on myself so you know where I'm coming from when I talk about this stuff. I was a teacher in Virginia for 14 years, middle school. I coached basketball and soccer during the whole time until I had to medically retire due to kidney failure because I do dialysis every day, have a port sticking out of my neck. You can, there you can see it. Anyway, I was then kicked off the kidney transplant list because I refused to get the COVID vaccine, even though I had COVID and had the antibodies, had it tested, whatever. I was all over the news for it. I was even on the front page of Fox News. And after I went on the news, liberals have spent every day, to the day, today even, harassing me and my family, doxing me, threatening me. There's a website about them threatening me, all sorts of stuff. Anyway, in the, I've had a lot of experience in the school system. I figured I'd come talk about some things because I've heard some stuff going on. I'll give a story, and then I'll relate it to what's going on in schools. When I was teaching, I had a student in eighth grade threaten to kill me in front of the whole class. I sent the student out, and I said, okay, you're not, you're not going to stay in my classroom. And then, this student had been threatening other teachers, other students for years. He got caught bringing, throwing stars, throwing them at other kids, bringing knives to school, you name it, okay? And the next day, I come to school, you'd figure, and by the way, I've been in Virginia, I was teaching my whole career in Virginia. They, I come, he's at my door, and I was like, what are you doing at my doorway? He's, oh, they told me to come back to your class. And so I split, I submitted a report to the school police officer, and then the principal got really mad at me. So I was trying to figure out, why was I being blamed for this? Why do you have all these kids fighting, doing all this stuff going on? Well, after schooling time, there was a meeting, and then we had, and I found out the real reason why, which I think is important for all the parents and all the people in the county and people that are going to watch this at home to know. Real reason why I found out was the, we had a meeting after school, and they said, okay, well, we're getting this many X amount of write-ups on white kids, Hispanic kids, and black kids. And the problem is that if every minute of class time and instruction time that the students aren't in the class, the school loses funding. And they lose even more funding for kids that are in the minority demographic. And so then it made sense. Oh, why are they not suspending and expelling kids, even though in the rulebook it says you can? That's right, because then the school loses funding, right? And so, and then there was on top of that, and I don't know if anyone knows this, but then you're encouraged as a teacher to fudge the grades. They told me, you're not allowed to fail the. They told me, you're not allowed to fail these kids. If you do, then you're in trouble and you have to resubmit your grades. They do this all, this was, this was the whole time I was teaching, everywhere I was teaching in Virginia, by the way. So this is a Virginia-wide thing. And so then you have social promotion. A lot of parents know this, but if your student fails one year, they can't fail again, they just automatically get promoted the next year. Now, obviously, you can see how this creates a massive amount of problems in the schools, okay? You're not holding anyone accountable. What do you think these kids are going to do? They're going to act out. What does that mean? This means I think you guys have the power to control the kids and tell them, hey, you have to be disciplined. Oh, you're just going to get way worse. There are going to be more than just fights, you're going to have riots, and it's going to be really bad. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I won't take all three of my minutes, I promise. Molly Denham from the Hartwood District. In accordance with Policy 1108, regular monthly school board business meetings are typically held the second Tuesday of each month. The Board of Supervisors has also chosen Tuesday as the day of the week to hold their meetings, and they meet the first and third Tuesday of each month. In an ideal world, this would work seamlessly to allow the public to have a specific day of the week set aside to attend both boards to remain current on all topics affecting the county. Unfortunately, we don't live in an ideal world, and the current arrangement continues to create massive problems for the public. Each year, starting in November and running through April, both boards adjust their schedules based on holiday activities, inclement winter weather, and other needs of the respective boards, and each year, these reschedule attempts result in multiple overlapping meetings between the boards, forcing the public to divide their attention amongst competing priorities. November through April is when the public's attention is most needed by both boards and is the most active time for the budget cycle. Our ability to not only attend the meetings of both boards but remain aware of county issues is being severely hampered and is damaging the effectiveness of the public to fully advocate for our schools. I would like this board to revisit Policy 1108 and request the board find a different day of the week other than Tuesday to hold their meetings. Though I understand the intention may have been to provide a consistent day of the week throughout the month for the public to attend county meetings, it has had the opposite effect and each year causes problems with the public's ability to participate in the governance of this county. In addition, I believe this board would better be served scheduling their meetings on a Wednesday or Thursday. Not only will this ensure any reschedule attempts by either board won't create havoc for the public, but it could also potentially allow you to have a better response time to any action taken by the supervisors during their normal Tuesday meetings, especially during budget season when time is limited and decisions must be made rapidly. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board. I am not a resident of the county. I am, I do have a son, though, that goes to Margaret Brent, so go Bobcats. I'm here on behalf of Naval Surface Warfare Center, Dogran Division. I came from my son's practice, so I'm sorry for the attire. And we are doing our third annual Dogran Downtown that we host at the Silk Mill Inn in Fredericksburg. It'll be October 11th from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. I realize it's a little bit early, but we would like to get on schools' calendars for next, next year. It's a great event, we do a lot of showing off for NSWC. A lot of people know that we're out there, but might not know what we do, or, you know, there still are some people that actually don't know that we're out there. So it gives us an opportunity to show the history. We do a lot of STEM activities for the students, and that's why I'm coming to each individual counties, kind of introducing the event so that maybe it could be a potential field trip. I know it has some scheduling with bus drivers and chaperones and things like that. But we do have our robotics team that comes out, our underwater robotics team, we do activities for the kids. Our explosive ordinance team comes out, a real live range boat comes out, and it's all done at the Silk Mill outside during the day. Last year, it rained, so we didn't have great attendance. The year before, we had, I believe, two schools, Montross and Rappahannock Regional, and then we had homeschoolers that attended both years. It's a great opportunity to kind of highlight opportunities outside of the regular, if kids don't want to go to school, we do have student internships and programs, and so it just gives an opportunity to showcase what we do, other options for kids in the STEM program. So I do have flyers that I am more than willing to give to you all. And yeah, hopefully we can get on your calendars for next school year.
Thank you so much. Is your contact information on the flyers? If we have any, if anybody has any questions?
It is not. It is not.
You can just write it down and give it to somebody or email us or something.
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next four speakers will be Peter Rhine, Robert Paulette, Kevin Walls, and Lee Stephen.
Raoullette.
Thank you. My name is Peter Rhine, and I live right next to the Cliff Farm school property that we discussed in the, that you discussed in the work session. This development of the school, which uses, would need to use a pump station, will affect me. Its initial installation and possible upgrade is going to affect me. The proffer statement says that the county shall use the powers of condemnation to obtain easements as well. So this would directly affect me as well. The pump station that the school may possibly be able to tag-team on and use is actually about one-tenth the size of what is needed for an elementary school. So that means not only the pro-rata cost, but also the additional cost of condemning brand-new properties to put a much larger pump station in would affect the county. The Stafford County Department of Public Works' final report revised May 14, 2018, Chapter 3, Page 11, just doing a bunch of words here, says that per 10,000 square feet, a public building needs 2,200 gallons per day for capacity. Average middle school is about 110,000 square feet. So this means about 24,200 gallons per day as needed, and this pump station is 2,200 gallons. So that's some math. And I was homeschooled, it's amazing. The 2007 county assessment of the property also had the estimated daily trips at approximately 2,200 vehicles if there was a school there. Right now, it's at 114. So that means big improvements will be needed for the road on, that leads into it. The proposed development at the entrance to the school, this is the one by JPI, with 141 homes, if that goes in and then a school goes in, it's an active adult community. I don't think that's going to be very easy to get a school in after the fact. So with these issues and the others the planning commission tabulated, we are convinced that the proposed development, not the school, but the housing development, will not benefit the school's ability to develop this land but may instead create roadblocks for planning. And hopefully, maybe we could have a town hall to get some community feedback on potential uses for that school property, for the school's use, to help better plan this before we're all backed into a corner. So we greatly appreciate your consideration of this matter, and you heard us, you brought this all up to reevaluate the property, and that's awesome. We really appreciate all you've done for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Taylor. My name is Bob Rolet, I live at 76 Cliff Farm Road in the Falmouth District. So obviously, I'm one of the properties that's directly impacted by the development, potentially by a school that might be built on the school property down on Cliff Farm. I appreciate you all finally discussing this. This is a discussion that is long, long overdue. We've been hounding this for, for a long time, and with an impending vote by the Board of Supervisors, it's even more imperative that this discussion occurs. And what we heard today, there was a large group of us that were in there, you know, attending and listening, you know, and what we heard was about the fact that you want to preserve your options with the school property down there. And as a taxpayer, that's absolutely important. We're the ones that paid to buy that land, we're the ones that, that, you know, will pay to build the school and everything else that will be needed. So having that conversation with us, the residents, the taxpayers, is extremely important. I can tell you personally, I've been knee-deep in this for over three years, thousands of hours, looking into the plans, the comprehensive plan, the ordinances, all of this, and we've tried to have this conversation. I can tell you that what JPI is planning will negatively impact your options down the road. There was a lot of information that was presented tonight that unfortunately was not accurate. Water and sewer will not come down to the school property line, it will end at the JPI development. It'll have to run through our properties, and we're outside of the urban services area. So does that mean easements, right-of-ways, condemnation? I don't know, let's have that discussion. The proposed road improvements, there are none. Painting the line and cutting down some trees, that's the only thing Gerald Properties is proposing. So what does that mean for a school that might be built down the road? That means now you're going to have to come in and ask for land, possibly condemnation from a new community that was built, and redesign and redo all that work. Not smart planning, not a good use of taxpayer dollars. And we all know, we just went through the budget, we just went through the CIP, it's tough out there. I listened to these discussions that you all had about more money for schools, and I'm a big supporter. I put four kids through Stafford County Public Schools, three of them through Governor's School. I'm proud of our school system, they're all successful. But we need you to have a conversation with us, and we're not having that. And so it's important that you get involved and you defend your equities with your property, our property, our tax dollars. Because if you wait to have that discussion, it's going to cost us millions more in rework in infrastructure, roads, schools, public services, all those things. So please, please, have these conversations. Defend your equities, defend our equities, protect your land, protect our land. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board members, Dr. Taylor. My name's Kevin Walls, I also live at Cliff Farm in the Falmouth District, and again, I'm going to talk a little bit about the school property on Cliff Farm. We were at the meeting earlier, the work session, we stood in there, we kind of watched you all when we walked in. Our presence is somewhat maybe intimidating, but that's not our intent. Our intent is to really ask you as board, we've done it with the Board of Supervisors, we've done it with the Planning Commission, hear what we got to say. Come out to our property, come out to the property and look at it. Because significantly, what I really want to talk about real quickly is, I heard a lot about transportation. You've heard us say that property is going to be locked, that property, you're not going to be able to do it. If you come down Leland, the only improvement they're going to do is they want to put some pinstriping on Leland Road. No turn lanes. If you've driven down that road, you've seen all the dump trucks. Safety's an issue. You put a school bus coming from Potomac Run down that road, you can't make a school bus turn there. And if you want to do that, you want to have that option, now's the time to act because if they build the houses in the application they're proposing, those houses are going to run right up against that road. Your options are gone. You're not going to be able to do that. Other issues about road improvements, again, like we said, no turning. Cliff Farm Road, there's no change, no application, they're not even attempting to do anything on Cliff Farm Road. Drive up Cliff Farm Road, it's an unimproved, half-paid, former dirt road. It ends to a dirt road. Put a school bus on that. We've seen school buses come up when there were kids on there, they struggled. We had to pull over so the buses could come up the road. That's a problem, no improvement. And if you want to improve that road, now you're talking about condemnation of my property. Because my property is right there, right across the street from where this development's going. I'm literally next door to the school property. The front door of the high school literally is going to be less than 100 yards from my front door. I was okay with that. Last thing I want to talk about is the only benefit to this whole program, this whole property development, and again, we're not against development, we know it's coming, but the county in that area is not prepared to do that. They're going to back the school board into a corner where your property, you can't do with it what you want to do. I heard what you want to do with it. You want to hold that property, it's important we have land available for students in this county. If we don't do something now, you're not going to be able to do it later. I ask you, some of you have been out to the property, I'll stand out at the end of the road, I'll give you my phone number, I'll walk you to the property, and you see it for yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Lee Stephen. I'm a property owner on Cliff Farm. I will be directly impacted by any development that you would, will decide to do on, on your property and will be directly affected by the housing development plan that is being currently being, currently before the Board of Supervisors. I do want to emphasize that the, the issue before the Board of Supervisors is not just the rezoning, but the development plan itself. So the approval or disapproval of that plan is actually on the agenda. And that development plan, I encourage you and I urge you to please inform yourself of the details of that plan because as my fellow, as my neighbors have just explained, that development plan, as it exists today, will shut down the flexibility that you articulated in the work session earlier today that you wish to have. You've mentioned that you want to maintain the maximum flexibility, you don't know what, what the best use of that property is today, and that's understandable, but you want to maintain the flexibility to use that land. But this development plan, as it's being proffered today and as it will be voted on, is going to shut down that flexibility and hinder that flexibility. So I urge you to understand the details of that plan and to be involved in the, in the conversation with the Board of Supervisors about that plan today before they vote on it. I also want to mention just one other, one other thing, and that is that this area actually is a historic area, it's Stoneman Station, and part of the, the issue that we were able to get the developer to do was to do a, what's called a Phase 2, I'm blanking, a Phase 2 archaeological survey of the area. They had, they, they had not done that, the, the Historical Commission had decided, had thought that that had been done, but they recommended that when, when it became clear that that had not been done completely, they've recommended to do that. So this is, this area requires careful planning and careful insight into what's being, what is, what is possible, and therefore I urge you therefore to, to inform yourself and especially get into the details of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes the citizen comments for tonight.
Great. Thank you very much to everyone. Moving forward to our action items. First item is adoption of proposed amended policy 2103, addresses student transfers.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Are there any questions or discussion?
I just wanted to, it looked to me like the only thing that changed was taking out guidance for children no longer participating in half-day programs. Is that pretty much? It's mostly to address the academies and the fact that students will be now attending the particular high school, not being transferred to. Right. But, but if students are in a program and then they leave that program, they would go back to their regular school, is that correct? Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? We can cast our votes. Motion passes seven to zero. Item 9.02, approval of the proposed amended Governance Committee Charter.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Excuse me, I would like to point out, I think there was a sentence that was accidentally crossed out. Oh, this is the charter, right? Okay, never mind. I'm thinking about the code of conduct. So this was just, we tried to update the charter so that it was more of what we do.
Any other questions or comments? We'll cast our votes.
Motion to reconsider, or whatever that is, because Maya accidentally hit the wrong button, because I told her that the charter said she was going to buy us breakfast every time we had.
Do we need to like second and vote on that?
Yeah.
Did you announce it, Taylor?
It was passed six to one with Maya voting no.
Wait, this is our code of conduct.
No, this was for the charter.
So motion, motion to revote.
Second. I second Dr. Chase's motion to revote.
You want to vote for it? Okay, well, Madam-
Okay, well, Madam Chairman, I think, I'm on the side that voted for it, so can I just make a motion to bring it back?
That's what she just did. Okay.
I'm still confused.
So we're gonna, so we're voting now on whether or not we're going to revote. This is the vote to revote.
Vote to revote.
Okay. Unanimous vote for revoting now.
Second.
Okay. Cast your vote for the Governance Committee Charter. That vote passes unanimously. Item 9.03, adoption of the proposed amended Board Member Code of Conduct and Board Governance Handbook.
Motion to approve.
Second. I would like to make one minor change. I just noticed, I think the, "I will have integrity in all matters and support the education, safety, and development of the whole student." And I think that was accidentally crossed out and acknowledged. The term "whole student" applies to all students in Stafford County, so is that acceptable? I think that got crossed out by accident, the first.
What page are you on?
Page two.
Page two.
The first item.
I think the first part, yeah, I think that got crossed out by accident. So that should probably be there, otherwise the sentence doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
Yeah, the whole point of that sentence is the integrity piece.
So we're gonna, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to amend the first item to include the statement, "I will have integrity in all matters and support the education, safety, and development of the whole student." And then, "and acknowledge the term 'whole student' applies to all students attending Stafford Schools." Is that acceptable, Ms. Halsted?
Sounds like it is.
Yes, it is acceptable. Okay.
All right. So motion. Now, any other discussion?
I would like to point out, there were specific things requested, which I think are covered in item six and in item nine. So I just wanna draw your attention to those.
Madam Chairman, just a comment.
Sure.
That the social media, I'll call it restriction, or only to public. So that means privately you can do anything you want. Just, is that the intent? Let me see what the number. Here.
Which number is that?
Looking for the pages. But I don't have it in front of me, but the one that says that you would not say.
I think public statements.
Yeah, disparaging statements against other board members in public social media. Okay. "I will refrain from making disparaging statements about fellow board members, board decisions, staff, families, and students, including but not limited to on public social media and in public statements." So was that intended to restrict it to public, or?
I see where you're going. So I just took it as public, meaning it's public-facing, so I, you know, on any platform. But I can see where, because public and private are two totally different things, that that might need to be clarified. So I took it as public-facing.
So we're saying like, I could still talk about y'all behind your back on my personal Facebook page, but I can't put it on my professional Facebook page? Is that what we're saying?
That's the way I read it.
Okay, I agree with that. That's fine.
So.
Wait a minute, you agree that you can talk about us behind our backs?
Only in private. I mean, people.
It's still public-facing.
See, I interpret public meaning that anything I say in a group,
it doesn't matter whether it's my personal page or my public page, is still being put out there in the ether sphere that anybody could pick it up.
And to frame the discussion.
But I see what you're saying. I do see.
Yeah. To frame it, the discussion that took place was that as public officials, there should be a higher expectation that we will manage ourselves better in public and in social, in public forums. So that's why, I see what you're saying, that because there's a concept of public versus private in this regard. But we were just, I think the discussion was about for the public doing better. So that any forward-facing social media page or whatever, this applies to.
So there wasn't an intent to restrict it? If there wasn't any intent, is there any issue with making it on social media rather than on public?
That would be fine. Would you like to make a friendly amendment to change that?
Yeah, I wasn't a party to the discussions, so I didn't know what the intent is.
So you're suggesting just take out the word "public" in front of social media? And just say, "limited to social media and in public statements," and then thoughtful in my public statements? So just take out the first "public"?
Yeah, I guess. I mean, and then you get the public versus private statements. It's just, this public part was the part that confused me.
So should we take "public" out completely? And just, then we would just be able to?
12D opens up the same conversation, I think, too.
Yeah, there's rules further in the second half of this document that go into greater detail about what those.
Well, operating protocols are different from the Code of Conduct, I would think. They may be explanatory, but it's more explanatory. They should be consistent. I, you know, I just didn't know what the intent is. I don't do social media, public or private, so, but I know that many people do, and your private ones are not open to the public. So my interpretation was you could do what you want in your private.
Even your personal one, if you have enough followers, your stuff can, still, it's gonna leak out. So I think it's all public. I don't think you can count on anything on a social media page remaining private.
Maya talked crap. So I can't do the friendly amendment, right? I can only second it? But I think if we remove the word "public," then what we're actually just saying is in social media in general.
If "public" is not intended to limit it, and then, you know, just take it out, and then.
Yeah.
Change 12D as well, because it also says "public social media." 12D, page six.
I guess, is that a friendly amendment? Then we're changing the, we're taking that word "public" out in that, in item 13, and we're taking it in front of social media, and we're taking it out, I think it was 12B, you said?
12D, page six.
Refrain from posting on their public, on their school social, on their public schools' political devices with marks regarding current affairs. And should refrain from disparaging fellows on, or board decisions on personal media, or on all, on social media.
On social media.
Okay. On social media. We'll get this done before next year, I promise.
I'm new to governance, so my first meeting was when we were finishing this up. I wanted some clarification on 12C. "The Board shall limit the use of board-linked social media accounts for purposes connected to school programs or services." That seems counterintuitive to me, because that feels like, that's exactly when we would want to use board-linked social media is to promote programs and services.
Saying is that we're going to limit our use of school-based social media to things that are relevant to our job on the school board.
Okay, that's not how I read that. I see that now, that you're explaining it that way, but it definitely read like, we shouldn't restrict.
Yeah, I see what you're saying too, but, you know, it's, you can't be, you know, like advertising a public sale and, or like, you know, free ice cream at some place or whatever, it's just school-connected stuff. So I second the friendly amendment. Do I need to do that again?
Yeah.
Okay, so I second.
Are any other questions?
Okay. If we move forward with our vote, please.
Oh, wait.
If we don't follow this, what happens?
Then, then we get, I don't know, we each get to slap the person who misbehaved, I guess.
I've just sent everyone an article. Motion passes unanimously.
Aspirational, our options.
Item 9.04, approval for the reallocation of 2020 bond funds and available cash funds for small capital projects. Mr. Fulmer.
So I'm sure Mr. Towery will join me up here too, but just wanted to give like a brief introduction into this, and then as we take questions, we'll, I'll pull Mr. Towery in. But a little bit of background here is, we have some project funds. Some of them are savings from projects that have been completed. So kudos to our facilities, our project managers, and O&M team that have created some savings on some of our projects. We don't always get to hear the good. This is a situation, we do have some savings, so that's a good thing. Also have projects that have kind of either, we make that decision whether we just defer them. They've been out there, like the North Stafford, some exterior work at North Stafford that's also tied to some ongoing litigation. So we, and some of those are tied to bonds that go all the way back to 2020. Some of these are cash-funded items. So what we wanna do, originally, we were coming and we wanted all of this to be reallocated tonight, and that's how it's presented on the agenda. Sent a message Friday, kinda saying, hey, with everything that's happened at the Board of Supervisors, the additional funding that we have from the 3R and all the additional needs, at this time, we wanna kinda table some of these projects and bring them back in May, because we wanna come at the May meeting, a work session, and then to the full board meeting to discuss kind of a whole reprioritization of some of our 3R projects. One, because our initial list that we brought to you, and it was approved in September, October timeframe, assumed that some of our major mechanical HVAC work was large projects. Those were not funded, but we did receive additional 3R funding. So those large projects need to be put back onto our 3R list. We technically don't have an approved 3R list that has those HVAC projects. So we wanna look at that for '25 and beyond, but we also wanna reprioritize, reallocate these funds for FY '24. As I mentioned, some of those are savings and some of it is cash. The piece that is more pressing, that isn't really tied to a, you know, kind of 3R, large capital item, is furniture needs. We budget less than $200,000 a year in replacement and expansion for furniture. And when you're adding 600, 700-plus kids a year, we're just not keeping up. And our furniture is really old. So right now, we're asking that if we can reallocate the cash funds so that we can, the subsequent item on the agenda is a purchase order for furniture. All of it is going towards elementary school classroom furniture. So classroom desks, student desks, student chairs. Think about 1,000 of them, so we're, some replacement and some ketchup, really. There's a little bit going to pre-K as well, because we need to expand our classrooms at pre-K. It is also going to student desks, or sorry, teacher desks and teacher chairs, because as we expand classrooms, so think, think modulars. So at the schools that, where we've added classrooms for, the modulars for classroom space, we've gotta furnish those classrooms. And so the students are continuing to come, we need desks and chairs. The last several years, team's done a phenomenal job of rounding up every available desk and chair we can find. We used to have like a warehouse where we've collected all those desks and chairs that were extra from each school, and we put them in the warehouse. And I was just at that warehouse last week, and that warehouse is bare. So really do not have any excess chairs, especially at the elementary school level. So as we get to July 1, we'll probably be using some of that furniture money for some, honestly, cafeteria table replacements. We have cafeteria tables falling apart that are in very dire need of replacement. Right now, so for tonight, as I mentioned, just wanted to reallocate some of those cash funds from the savings from 3R projects and put it towards a furniture purchase. The reason we broke that out separately and asked for it to be done tonight is just a timing issue. The vendors are saying the lead time, if we want them here, by the time to set up and get into the schools, we're really on a very short timeline of about the next couple of weeks. They're pushing us really for next week. I think we have a couple of weeks, but I don't think we have a month in order to get those in in time, get them assembled, and get them set up in the classrooms.
So, Madam Chair, really quick, just to add a little bit of clarification. This is really like a four-step process. So the first step that we're asking the board to consider tonight is, one, to reallocate some funds for the use of furniture, that's 9.04. And then 9.05, to then act on that reallocation, to then authorize some purchase of some furniture. And then part three, to come back in May to take a look at your needs, because the supervisors, although they funded some 3R things, did not fund some of the major maintenance projects on HVAC and major mechanical systems. So to reevaluate that list. And then part four, to take action on that list in May. So this is really like a 30-day, four-step process to look at 3R. So I hope that that helps clarify.
Okay, I think we all have some questions, so we'll start with Dr. Chase and work our way down.
Yeah. So, Mr. Fulmer, why don't the two numbers match? So we've got cash funds for $444,000, but then you want a purchase order for $417,900.
Yeah, so we don't need to use every dollar. $417 is the actual cost of the furniture that we're purchasing. So that's the amount we need reallocated, not the entire cash amount, if you didn't wanna do it.
Okay. So there will then be an extra $20,000 or something like that?
Yeah, which will be reallocated. It'll still be available for us when we come back next month.
Right, okay. And what does this mean for the Ferry Farm roof? And what about the Hampton Oaks HVAC system that got put on hold for the Stafford Middle HVAC system?
Thanks. So, yeah, great question on the Hampton Oaks and Stafford Middle. So we'll come back and talk about that in May. All we're doing here tonight is, we're basically taking, if you, if you could see the table in your agenda item there, there's lines two, three, four, five, six, and seven. It starts with A.G. Wright, Repair Track.
I liked the 62 cents.
Yeah, through the Ferry Farm Elementary Repair Sewer. It's largely the Ferry Farm funds there. We're swapping the bond funds with cash funds that are on the roof project. And so that will allow those bond funds to be used on the roof project, and that frees up the cash. And then that cash can be used on furniture purchases.
Okay. But, I mean, but we are potentially taking half a million dollars that could be used for 3R projects of one sort or another, and instead spending them on furniture?
So.
Right. I mean, I'm just, I'm just, that's what we're doing, right? That's what we're, that's what we're trying to decide, if we wanna do that. Got it?
Yeah, and normally, we would say, you know, just do it all together and prioritize your lists in May. The ordering timeline so that we can have chairs for the children to sit in in August is now. We still think that you need to take a hard look at your list of 3R and do some reprioritization to account for some of those major mechanical systems.
And do we have a list of this furniture we're buying for $417,000?
We do, yeah. And I'll say too, that the 444, we're anticipating, so the 417 is the immediate order we have ready to go, click send, if you will. We're anticipating, as Mr. Fulmer alluded to earlier, some other incidental items that are gonna come up between now and the end of the summer to be prepared for August. So that's part of the reason for the additional, you know, $20,000 or so.
Just, because I know $400,000 seems like a lot for furniture. It doesn't actually take you that far, with classroom furniture is very, very expensive, furniture in general is. But just some kinda nice round numbers, I could send you the exact numbers. But over 1,000 student elementary school chairs, over 825 elementary school desks, only about 35 teacher desks, and then the corresponding chairs. Also, it's bookcases and like, I think the kidney tables that go in each classroom.
Dr. Warner?
Well, I will say that my visits to elementary schools have revealed that some of our teachers are sitting at some pretty sad little desks. And many of our students, you know, it's just like the furniture at home, it wears out, so.
And, and I, I mean, I hate to say this, but this actually isn't going to replace any of that furniture. So we're still gonna be stuck with the 30-year-old furniture. This is just for the expansion.
This is just for the growth?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Guy?
Yeah, I just had a question and then a comment. Because you mentioned buying cafeteria tables, but I thought we could use a different, different money. Like, can you, can you do that, or am I mistaken, the nutrition money?
Not for cafeteria tables, but for things that are happening in the kitchen. Not for cafeteria tables, but for things that are happening in the kitchen, yes. So, yeah. And, and I mean, this is a good lesson, I think, for, for everybody in this space is that whether it's an HVAC system or a cafeteria table or a teacher desk or a computer, that, that the assets have a useful life. And we have a long history of, of actually getting great value out of the assets past their useful life. But when they go, they go. And there, there is some replacement that, that needs to take place so that, that the schools can function properly. So we need to be mindful of that in addition to the growth needs.
And then my, my comment is just because, you know, we all have constituents who are constantly on us about everything that we do. And I know it'd be like, $400,000 of furniture, my, what did y'all buy? So if, if like the list that you had, if that could be a part of our attachment.
Sure.
When, when something like this comes up where it's like a question, you know, like a lot of money, because we're not paying $1,000 for a hammer, but that's what they're going to say.
Yep.
So that's off. I could just have those lists, not, I don't need it now because you, you said it, so I wrote it, I can write it down, but.
So that's actually a great point. And I will add that if you just divided it by the number of schools we have, it's about $13,000 per school. Doesn't go very far. Now granted, it wouldn't be divided evenly because obviously our population growth is not evenly distributed across the county. But it's not a lot of money. It really isn't relative to what we're, how fast we're growing.
Ms. Halsted?
So just to make sure I'm reading this paper right. There's really at the end of all this about 1.5, little over, I did my calculator and do that math in my head, by the way. I took my calculator out and did that. There's about $1.5 million more that we're switching over and swapping out and doing stuff with, correct?
So, yeah, so, yes, approximately.
At the end of the first chart, it says 1, 3, 2, and it's like 1.3 million. At the end of the second one, it's 205.
Yeah, and we're not, we're not asking you to do anything with that tonight. So we're going to come back in May and have a more full.
Being folded into the next prioritization project that we're, or the three R project for the next month.
So, so to add to Ms. Halsted's point, the, you have the, the budgeted amount in cash plus new bond issuance for three R that the supervisors approved, plus this project savings. You, you do have a healthy dollar sum to, to start chipping away at your three Rs. And this is a part of that mix.
Okay.
And that is fantastic for us. It actually positions us very well going into three R. But it'll go quickly because the projects are very expensive.
Yep.
So if we could also get a breakdown of the 32 cents and what we're going, how we're, no, I'm just kidding. But can you, now, I, I thought I understood the cash bond, can, the, what, the Ferry Farm roof thing? Can you just explain that? Because it's listed up here, we're swapping out bond funds for cash money. Because we need the liquid asset right now to put towards what we're.
Yeah, so we don't, we don't want to use bond money to go buy furniture, right? So, so we're kind of switching it there so that we use the bond money on the Ferry Farm roof. And it frees up the cash that was identified for that project to be used for furniture.
I'm assuming there's no little like fine print writing that says we can't do that, right?
No, so all of these funds have been appropriated by the County Board of Supervisors. But we'll still, just out of full disclosure, we'll let them know. And I've already talked to their county staff, letting them know that we're doing this. And there was, there was no heartburn there. I told them that we would let them know formally exactly what happens so that they can notify their board.
I mean, I didn't mean to make it sound like it was, you know, we were doing this like under our sheet. I just don't, I didn't understand the process and I didn't know how that swapped over.
Yeah, no, it's a great question.
So if they already know and stuff, I feel like that's better, too. That just makes me, in the spirit of our new transparency.
Ms. Healy?
It, it looks like a, about two-thirds of the bond money is coming from the North Stafford repair exterior envelope.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct? Is that going to be back on the three R list?
So that will be up to the board. We'll discuss that in May because we're not actually reallocating that North Stafford money tonight. But I, I think the board's going to have a lot of difficult decisions to make when we come back in May. So this North Stafford project to do these exterior improvements, so, so think a little bit of doors and windows. This was supposed to be kind of phase two after we did some of the other exterior work. And there's still more phases. But that project has probably doubled in price since we initially got this bond money in 2020. So we don't have enough funds to do that project. And so now with other projects that have come to light, we want to bring everything back to you and let you reprioritize.
That money needs to be used in, like, we have to use the money within the next year, is that right?
Yeah, so, so technically, it's about five years that you're supposed to spend down the VPSA money. We're talking to kind of Bond Council and VPSA now to clarify exactly, do we have to spend it within five years? Or can we get an extension there? There does become a legal cost of having to go back and, and reduce some paperwork. So we're trying to avoid that. So if we know, if we have a project that can be done in that timeline and we, the board chooses to reprioritize and it can be done, then we'll do that. If not, then we'll go back to VPSA and ask them to extend.
So does it have to be spent or allocated?
Spent.
Yeah, I, I want to be cautious about deferring projects at North Stafford. Because now that we've got, you know, we've got a new high school coming on, but North Stafford is our oldest high school. So this was important to the board at the time it was done. It was not for cosmetic purposes. I recall specifically discussion that there were safety issues and, you know, reasons why this exterior work had to be done. So I, I, I just, I don't want to lose sight of that. So, you know, this looks like a sizable amount of money. But if two-thirds of it is coming from a project that we are quote "deferring," then is that really a savings? I don't, I don't know. I have questions about Ferry Farms, but I'm going to, you know, let Ms. Randall take the, the lead on that. Because again, you know, that's another project that has just been a fiasco. You know, in terms of getting the, the work contracted, getting it done, getting the, the project finished. And, you know, the, you know, to say we had over $100,000 left in the repair pavement, isn't that because we did not do all the work that we had originally say we were going to do? So it's really not a savings as much as it is a, a change.
So to your point, there are actually two really important things to illuminate right now. Not all project savings are good. And, and the North Stafford project is a good example of that. Because the, the cost of the project escalated beyond the scope so rapidly that it's no longer affordable. So it shows as a savings, when in reality, just the work didn't get done because it was too expensive.
And I, I get all that. I think it might be helpful to have some type of footnotes to these projects. Because when it looks like it's completed and we're saving all this money, it appears that we either overestimated or, you know, you know, something went wrong. But it's, it's none of the above, it's because we had to cut the scope. So that's, that's just, you know, my, my questions with, with those. And then I, I just have a comment on, on the furniture. And I understand we need furniture. We go into schools and we see, you know, sometimes there's not enough chairs or, or desks. But every time we present our budget to the supervisors, we include a substantial amount for growth, the cost of growth. And that includes, you know, the, the staff, the, the space, you know, the furniture. So to say that we need to spend this 400,000 today for furniture for growth, and I'm assuming is this past growth or future growth, I, I don't know, is, it's, it's almost like a windfall. I'm not saying we don't need it and I'm going to support it. But if we're budgeting for growth, then surely that includes furniture. And we should not be in a position where we need to, 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 to come up with funds, just, just spend more.
I, I appreciate the confidence that you've had in our past budgeting. Unfortunately, in this instance, it's not merited. We identified growth funds specifically for staffing, for fuel, for buses, for a lot of physical assets, even computers in some instances. But there are some elements that we have been working off of a back inventory. This is for current needs and projected needs. And it needs to be something that we factor into our growth costs in the future. Now, what that means is that growth number is going to even look more significant in the future. Because this is going to be a component that has to be tied into it. And, I mean, Ms. Healy, you actually are the only person on the board that may recall what this is like. But the upfront cost and the soft cost for opening a school, it's going to be some sticker shock tied to some of those purchase orders because of just obtaining those physical assets to, to put even furniture and fixtures in some of the new schools that we're about to build is going to, it, it's going to, it's going to turn some heads for sure. But, but, you know, we are, we are out of the inventory. And now we are moving into needing to make sure that that is a part of the staffing, is a part of the growth conversation that we have in the future, but it wasn't in the past several years.
The budget that we are going to be looking at next, well, after the furniture.
Does not include furniture.
That, that growth, that growth cost doesn't include furniture.
It is people, fuel, and other physical assets, but not furniture now.
All right, so, so this is a rhetorical question. But it's, why not? And it, it absolutely should be cost, just like, just like the, the new computers that we need, the, the new Chromebooks. We, we have those for students. If we're not including furniture, then, then we, we certainly should be. Then we would not be in this position because this is, and it's, to me, it's something that, that we should have been anticipating when we plan for next year. And if we have a past need for it that has not been met, then that needs to be put into the budget. So the budget next year does not have this furniture in it. Do you anticipate that we're going to be looking at this again with the, the growth that's anticipated for next year?
Oh, I think you're going to be looking at this as a separate line that gets added in your nondiscretionary category. As long as Stafford County is going to grow, this is like one more component that's going to be added to that mix. The, the why, why this year, why now, why all of this is that we have benefited from the fact that we have had some furniture that we have used and reallocated from even other classrooms to be very efficient. And just that opportunity is not available to us anymore.
And, and that's the good. I'm, I'm not being critical, I'm just asking these exploratory questions.
That's a good question.
Because we know we've kind of reached the end of the line in our reserves. There are no more reserves. So then when we pass the budget for next year, it absolutely should be in there. And perhaps that's something between the provisional budget and the final budget that, you know, we're going to have hopefully, you know, you know, next month, we, we need to relook at. When we get the governor's final month, um, numbers, what we're getting from the state, if there, if we are anticipating needs in that furniture line, then I'd like to see that added into next year's budget. Not tonight, too late for that. But when we come back for a final budget for, for next year. So we're not in this position about having this grounds money, you know, to, to meet these essential needs.
Yeah, and, and Dr. Taylor kind of hit it on the head. We had a, had a surplus. So think, when we opened a school, we, we kind of furnished every classroom with the, the set number of students identified, excuse me. And now that we've, are expanding beyond those classrooms and having to, and usually, we build a new school and we furnish it with those capital project funds. And now we've hit the point where we're at, we've added all these modulars and we've sucked up all of that surplus and furniture that we had. And, and so I will tell you, even before this requirement came up to the purchase additional desk, we're actually working on it now and it's a, it's a project for this summer. Before next year's budget, we'll have kind of like a full furniture replacement schedule, similar like we would have a fleet vehicle replacement schedule. So we can plan kind of in our five-year plan for that furniture. And then we have to fund it. And so that's really been the key. We know that we've been underfunding our, underfunding our furniture line for 10 years now. So I think we're at $175,000 actually this year. We've always been between 150 and 200,000 was what's in the budget. So honestly, that number needs to be several hundred thousand dollars higher in order to, to maintain it. And that's in our five-year plan to grow that, it just didn't land in this budget. So unfortunately, with, because of replacements and stuff that we've had this year, we haven't been able to keep up with the growth. But we are going to have a, a pretty detailed furniture replacement schedule going forward.
So I'm going to reiterate my request. This is me speaking for myself. When this budget comes to us for adoption, that, that be considered, particularly if there are some additional funds that are coming in from the state. That the furniture line, the anticipated needs for next year be included in the budget. If we know we're going to need them, we should be planning for it.
I'll add just one more thing. So when we do, when we do the modular budgets the last two years, we have added, typically added some furniture costs into that because that's where a lot of the, you know, expansion of furniture is headed towards, at least in terms of numbers. What's happened, what we've noticed over the past few months is that those numbers are getting sucked into other more pressing needs at the modulars, unanticipated. The, the county did give us some extra funds, as an example, on the footers. That came, we got 350, that came in at 390 as an example. So there's 40,000, right? So there's, there's some other things that are kind of eaten away at the edges of budgets that were put together six months ago that have kind of evolved. So I wouldn't say we didn't completely plan some of the furniture stuff. I think that we're just also, we've been budgeting on shoestrings. And we need to probably, to your point, I think, reevaluate that at this point and say, hey, we need to, we need to do this differently moving forward. Absolutely.
Ms. Randall?
Um, so the Ferry Farm repair pavement, it says complete and then it has a balance. What does that mean?
So those were the funds that, you recall, we originally, the original scope of that project included a lot of drainage improvements out there.
Because of rats and then whatnot, that was in the report, I remember.
What's that?
There were rats that were named in the report, as I remember, but go ahead.
Yeah, so we changed the scope out there kind of on the fly and ended up paving the front gravel area and then repaving and resurfacing a lot of the other areas that were in need. So the original budget, when it was set five or six, four or five years ago, anticipated doing a lot more work. We didn't do that work. We only did a, a portion of that work. And so there ends up being a bit of a balance, the 105.
Okay. And then the renovation, it, again, it says complete. What's not being done for fourth and fifth?
On the fourth and fifth grade wing, so we've done everything that we were able to scope in there in the budget. I would say, you know, it would have been ideal if we could have done some of the, some of the casework out there. We just, it was kind of next level in terms of costs that we just couldn't reach, too. So, but everything else in terms of the painting and.
Flooring.
What's that?
Flooring.
A lot of the flooring, yes, in the classrooms and so forth has been done.
Okay. And then, so then I'm confused, I guess, at the bottom when it says Ferry Farm roof from above. And project status swap, what is that?
So we have a separate project to do the Ferry Farm fourth and fifth grade wing to do the roof out there this summer. There are cash funds set aside to do that roof.
Okay.
Project. And so what we're saying is basically take the, take the bond funds, use that on the roof, and then take the cash funds from the roof and use that, free that up so we can add it to the other cash funds down here and purchase the furniture.
So we will get the roof done in the fourth and fifth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I, first of all, I want, I really do want to commend you. For people watching at home, we're looking at a spreadsheet where we're literally re-appropriating 32 cents, 32 cents for projects. And I just think that's fantastic in the best and worst ways possible. But we are using every penny and we now have proof. I did want to ask about the North Stafford auditorium improvement fund balance because I know that that started as an underfunded project and then we were able to find funds to complete that project. But this is a pretty significant number left over. So I didn't know if something didn't happen or we really just had a good stroke of luck.
Yeah, no, that's one where we can kind of give kudos to our own team because we, we tried to bid that out. We didn't get bids or first it came in way over budget, then we couldn't get bidders and it kind of was going back and forth there. We ended up pulling it and doing it all in-house where we did individual pieces. We managed the project with our own staff. It kind of put a strain while we had a lot going on. But they were able to break it up and kind of subcontract each little piece of it out instead of using one general contractor. And it generated significant savings.
That's great news. And not to be a downer, but in deferring our repair of the exterior envelope at North Stafford High School, what should we as a community be prepared for is, what's the worst-case scenario here? You say windows and doors, are we talking? You say windows and doors, are we talking about wearing coats in classrooms? Are we talking about water, watertightness?
Some of it's definitely going to be visual impact, visually impactful, but it's, it's, it's more or less potential water damage type of things that we're gonna be...
Energy efficiency.
Energy efficiency, those types of things. So again, I think our 2020, I'm lost in the three R list. I think the 2025 three R list requested an additional one point, I'm doing this off top, I had 1.2 or 1.3 million in funds to supplement the 994,000 and finish that out and get that done. So that'll be in front of the board for consideration next month as an option that could perhaps be moved forward with now at this time, you know, in terms of projects.
So I'm a little confused there. If we're deferring this with potentially using it for another project.
So what we're...
Then where, like, then this 994 does not exist anymore.
Yeah, that, that deferral is technically coming to you in May. So that's where we wanna push them and look at it all together with the entire three R list. The only piece we wanna look at tonight is that, the cash, available cash section so we can reallocate it towards furniture.
All right. Well, Dr. Chase first and then we'll connect to you.
Yep. So I just wanna ask, so this furniture that we're putting into modulators, when we open the new elementary schools, we have money for furniture, but if we're closing modulators, then what's happening with that furniture?
Yeah, so it can definitely be reused. It could be replacing existing furniture that we have in the schools that, believe me, is needed, as was it Dr. Warner? I think you mentioned that, of what you've seen in the classrooms. So we need to, we have furniture that's 30 years old now, so let's start recycling some of that and replacing it.
Right.
Or if we had to, it could move into ES-18 or ES-19, this new furniture.
Okay. And then I just, just wanna remind my fellow board members that a number of these projects were paid for with bond funds that were supposed to repair Drew's HVAC system because if people are concerned about various projects being moved, $3.5 million was what was allocated for Drew's HVAC system. And that's what paid for these track repairs and, and various other things, which is fine. But I think we really need to bring in May everything and really take a, a good look because we are having to make, you know, which child are we giving clothes to kind of thing, right? It's a really tough, it's a really tough thing that, you know, Stafford Middle School's HVAC system is being paid for by putting Hampton Oaks's on the back burner. And so we really need to be thinking very seriously about what we're gonna pay for with three R funds. And it needs to be things like HVAC systems, not things that are a little more discretionary. Thanks.
Ms. Halsted?
So the North Stafford High School, this exterior, just a quick question, is there any, because the solar is going up there right now, right? So none of this is contingent upon the solar and none of that is impacted?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then the only other question, or the only other thing I would ask to tie, just to, to piggyback on Dr. Chase, is that when, when we get this list next month, like, are we prioritizing it based on need, I understand, but we need to be very specific about the years anyway that it's behind?
Mm-hmm.
And I, and, and I'm not so, I'm not necessarily sure that just because something is, you know, three years behind that it's less important than something that's 10, you know, 10 years behind or vice versa. So, so that kind of comparison might be nice to also see in terms of, I think there's plenty on here that's, that has a sense of urgency to it, but it also just, in terms of like really for us to be able to process and understand where we're at, how long it's been on the CIP, where it's, how it's been moved around, or the three R list, sorry. And, and I, I just would like to see that so that I can understand better because, because I know most of our projects are overdue by 20 years anyway, but, but it would be good to see that just as a, as a way to kinda pull the numbers out. That's just my request.
Sure thing.
Anyone else? Would someone, we actually don't have a motion right now.
Motion to approve the reallocation.
We had that whole discussion without a motion?
I thought we made a motion.
Oops, that's not the rules.
And I just do wanna clarify, as you're making the motion, I would, I would probably clarify in the motion what we're reallocating there because it's not the entire list that's provided. We are just waiting to reallocate the rest of that until May. So more specifically, the cash funds reallocated is...
Motion to reallocate the cash funds from the 2020...
Second.
And should we also note in that motion that the Ferry Farm roof will be swapped for the bond funds? Because otherwise it just, the cash comes out and the swap isn't there and most it's part of the motion.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's part of your reallocation.
But, but the motion had to do with the cash funds.
Yes, and you have several sources of cash funds noted.
You have several sources of cash funds noted on the spreadsheet. That's the attachment. So you, you actually have a lot of things that are generating the cash funds, not just one project.
So that doesn't include that 102,000 from...
That's part of it, but you have other sources that are generating those cash funds.
It's a 12.
Yeah.
It does.
You, you perhaps could friendly amend, take a friendly amendment to the motion to also note that we have swapped it.
It should be about the reallocation of funds, I think is the language.
It doesn't hurt to clarify to Ms. Healy's point, I think.
I think, I agree, yeah.
I mean, that's specifically cash that we're using. That wasn't cash to begin with. It was, I mean, it's converting cash into bond, but if the motion is just to use the cash funds, it doesn't do anything to move it up to the bond list, at least from my view.
Maybe we need to read the motion that it's on action item 9.04 just as it is because it talks about approval of the reallocation of 2020 bond funds and available cash funds for small capital projects.
Is that your substitute motion?
Absolutely.
Second.
Okay, we're done.
Voting in favor or against the substitute motion made by Ms. Randall?
Yes.
I'll, we'll cast our votes. That motion passes unanimously.
I move that we approve 9.04, the approval of purchase of amount 417,4...
9.05.
For, 9.05 for the purchase of furniture. Second.
Any discussion? Oh, sure.
I, I would just ask and follow up with Ms. Geis' comment earlier because I too looked for an attachment to this to see, you know, what furniture we were exactly purchasing. I know you have a list, that that list of the furniture that amounts to this sum of money be attached to the, the meeting minutes.
Absolutely.
So that it's clear on the record what is being purchased and...
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to 9.06, adoption of a provisional FY-25 school board budget.
Motion to approve the adoption of a provisional FY-25 budget.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll just add that this would be the second budget that you're voting on, but not the last, and that you have one more budget to vote on, and that is after the state approves the final, their final version. We'll come back with a final version for the board to consider.
Ms. Healy?
Dr. Taylor, just for the, the record, could you state the position of the service staff salaries increases that are included in this provisional budget we're, we're voting on?
Absolutely. I'm very proud to say that this budget includes the full implementation of Phase One of the non-licensed service scale.
Thank you.
For further clarification, I'm sorry, just because we're, we're approving another provisional budget because we're still awaiting more information from whatever. So now there were some concerns that it might be a protected budget process with the state. Are we past that? Are we thinking after, because it's April 17th, right? That's the sort of do or die day now. Is that the, is that still, like, if we come back in two weeks, are we gonna have the information we need?
Yeah, so that, so I think it's gonna be longer than two weeks. So with, with this adoption, and this is an important point, your need for a special called meeting in two weeks is null. So you, you are, you're actually saving yourself a, a meeting in two weeks by, by adoption of this provisional budget. But if, if the veto session and the reconvene session is successful and there's a budget that comes out of that, your May meeting is a very realistic timeline. I will say that the only scenario that puts us into really significant trouble is that if it goes far past the reconvene session. What this looks like if they are unable to settle on a budget during the reconvene session where the governor can sign something into law, the governor will call a, a special, a special session of the General Assembly just to deal with the budget or any other items that, that the governor calls the, the Assembly into session. It is in every Virginian's best interest that this happened before July 1. That, that is a, a big question mark for us as 60%, over 60% of our revenue comes from state government. Our ability to operate is in question if we do not have an adopted state budget prior to July 1. And so we, we definitely, we definitely want government to do its job and to, and to have something that's agreed upon. Obviously, the more time that they do this in advance, the better. If it, if it comes to it and they're right up to the wire on June 30th, guess who's having an emergency school board meeting on July 1? So, you know, there, there, there are some things that are gonna happen as a consequence of that for sure, but we, we obviously would love to avoid that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, then we'll cast our votes on the adoption of the provisional school board That motion passes unanimously. Superintendent's report and comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be very brief this evening. I am delighted, as I'm sure most of the staff and the community are delighted, that you have no need for item 12.01 on your agenda, which is announcement of a special called meeting. I do wanna echo my thanks to our state legislators who worked as a team to represent Stafford's interests in the General Assembly this year and to work very hard on our behalf to, to require, to acquire revenues that position Stafford schools very well. I'd also like to thank the Board of Supervisors. After a very difficult and contentious budget season, a majority of the Board of Supervisors did come to, to make revenues available in aid of the school system within their advertised tax rate. This was a good compromise under the circumstances, although I would be remiss if I didn't point out that over $40 million of unfunded needs are still within our grasp and, and need to be addressed in the very near future. This was not a budget that is really moving us forward. It, it's a budget that is helping us live to fight another day. That, that's not what we would call success, although we are thankful that our, our funding partners did come to the table to, to have a lot of really tough conversations with us and did come up big for us on addressing some of our major maintenance needs, which continues to be a priority and continues to be a need. And I think that, that there were some realities that, that came to, to the general public's understanding. We wouldn't have had a successful budget process to the extent that it was successful without the support of a lot of community members who are very engaged at every step along the way, several of which are, are in the audience this evening or were here earlier this evening. In addition to the green shirt posse, we had a, a large number of community members that didn't attend one meeting, didn't attend two meetings, but attended dozens of meetings and really helped to drive home the message that this community cares about its schools and they care about its children and they want success, not just for county government, but they want success for the entire county and the entire community. And it is, it is, I am so proud to be a superintendent in a community that stands up for its schools. It's really that important. So thank you to our teachers, community members, parents, and even students who stepped up to advocate for the schools. A lot's happened since our last board meeting. The Stafford Schools team won in double overtime at the Dare basketball game. I will say the Sheriff's Office crushed us last year. It was not close. Well, it was maybe close for like a couple minutes, but then it wasn't close. This year it was really close and it was really exciting for the kids and parents who attended the Dare basketball game. Double overtime, what a thrilling conclusion, very exciting. Huge shout out to our Communications Department and North Stafford High School who hosted senior prom for our 55 and up community this past weekend. Thank you to Brookpoint High School and all of our fantastic visual and performing arts teachers who held our annual art show at Brookpoint a couple of weeks ago. It just was absolutely fantastic, thousands of pieces of art on display on multiple stories of Brookpoint's campus, several fantastic performances from our kids. It really was something to be very proud of. I have to give a, a shout out to Imam Shahada of Mesgat Aliyah, who offered an invitation to Ramadan Iftar to the school board and senior staff, where we had an opportunity to learn about Ramadan and also break bread with the mosque. And the event got even extended into additional week, thanks to our board chair, who pressed to make sure that our principals were invited as well to an Iftar. And that was a, a memorable experience for our, our team as well because they joined some of our, our, our service team from the Sheriff's Office at, at that Iftar celebration as well. Stafford schools love science. We celebrated the solar eclipse on Monday with our students in session and had a great experience, learned a lot, and our kids learned a lot too. And that was certainly something that was memorable and a twice in a, in a generation kind of experience for our kids. And we're just super proud that that was such a, such a success for us. Although, of course, next time we'd like to be in the direct path, not the, not the 80% path or the 90% path. He was here this evening and I, and I was remiss not to, to share my thanks a little bit more while he was here. But Colonel Brooks, during his command of the, of Marine Corps Base Quantico, has just done an outstanding job and has been such a friend and partner to the school system and to the county. He's visible in Stafford County. He's, he's supportive of the programs that we do. He and Penny Rowley are definitely worthy of a lot of the recognition that we, that we shared with them this evening. I'm so proud that the board wanted to do a military support, family support advisory committee. As the son of a sailor, the nephew of a marine, and the husband of a soldier, I can tell you that military families need a ton of support. And it is just absolutely fantastic that we are committed to that as the second school division in the Commonwealth to be an entire Purple Star Division. So I celebrate with our military families by wearing purple today. And I just absolutely thank you for your dedicated service at home while your soldiers, marines, and sailors are defending our nation. With that, I just wanna thank the board for another great month as we close out the next 32 school days and then it's all buttoned up. And we'll see you next month and talk about graduations.
Ms. Randall?
All right. Okay, I also would like to share my grateful, gratefulness to have a, what are you laughing at me for now? Oh, good. All right. For attending Iftar at the mosque, that was a first for me. Excellent lessons, amazing experience, and of course, the food was phenomenal. I also attended the All County, Stafford County Fine Arts Festival at Brookpoint. And it was amazing to see all the art pieces there. I think our digital art programs in the middle school have come such a long way. But the one thing, I would also like to give a shout out to Anne Marie Bolino, even though she left us, she kind of like snuck back in to make sure this was a super successful event. So although she's not with us, I do, do greatly appreciate her work in this, you could totally tell. But I also, having been a teacher, I guess, when you walk through there, we don't have a place in Stafford where you can walk through and really admire art, all different mediums of art. all different mediums of art, even the theatricals and the musical arts. And this is such an amazing occasion that thousands of people, they come in to see their child's art and end up getting a full art experience by walking through the entire school. It's phenomenal. But the thing that also struck me was how many lessons were prepared and how, by these teachers? And how they prepared the art by cutting it, selecting it, matting it, labeling it, bringing it in, designing their setups, purchasing magnetic clips so they could, because they knew they had the section in front of lockers, putting background bulletin board paper up, putting it all up. Some of them were there from three till eleven PM, then coming back for the next two days with permagrens because they weren't forced. They were excited. They were excited to see their kids. They were excited to meet their families and help them share and show off their beautiful art. But then, when it was all said and done, they had to take it all down, load it all back up again. That is such a heavy lift for those teachers. And I just want to give them all the kudos because it didn't look so good and sound so good without you. I'm, I'm very much looking forward to our award recognition celebrations of students and staff that we have coming up. But there is, and I would also like to say I attended Spark, which Angie Mergo, Dr. Taylor's administrative assistant, it was an idea she had, a spark of an idea. And she knocked it out of the park with so much help. I enjoyed going and seeing teachers, our educators, say, raise their hands to say that they had never been to a conference before. And yet, we provided them one that they thoroughly enjoyed and appreciated. And the gift baskets were out of this world. But there, it's really interesting when you go to our social media accounts and you see these beautiful videos of the Fine Arts Festival or Spark or New Teacher Institute. We have even videos where our elementary school principals tell us to go to school or Dr. Taylor telling us not to go to school. And then there's this one particular person that does this work, Jose Ruiz. And he is like, you, you just have, he's so stealth and so quiet. But he is there at everything to capture everything and then share these amazing videos that just do our school system such good justice. So he's, he's a quiet person. He's a really great person. And I just wanted to call out Jose as part of our communications team for the amazing, amazing work that he does. And that's all. Thank you.
Ms. Healy?
All right, well, I'm not gonna go over all those events, which were all fantastic. But I do want to thank Dr. Taylor for helping to, I'll call it facilitate our, our invitation to the mosque. That was a real learning experience for me. And it was, you know, it was a wonderful opportunity. And, you know, it was great to be able to be part of a celebration and a culture. And the, the members were, were, I think, genuinely interested in us and very thankful that we were there. Where, you know, I was on the other side, thank you for, for, for having us. And I agree with, with Ms. Randall, that food was amazing. So if you get invited, take, take, take advantage of the invitation. I want to thank Mrs. Rivera for her outstanding leadership at, at Rock Hill over the past nine years. I, I know she's gonna be great in HR and it certainly is my hope that she will be very involved in the recruitment and, you know, recommendation for a new principal because, you know, each of our schools has their own culture. And they have, you know, they're, they're all communities. We're all Stafford County schools, but particularly, I think, in the, in the elementary. It's, it's very much a, a, a small-town community. And Mrs. Rivera has just done such an incredible job of, of making everyone welcome and, and appreciated both students and, and staff at, at Rock Hill. So I will, I will very much miss her as one of the principals in my district. But I will be looking forward to great things from her, from, from the HR department. And HR is very fortunate to, to have recruited her. I also want to thank the, the members of the Board of Supervisors who supported us in the, in the budget process and also in the, the construction going forward. You know, we, we heard lots of rumors and it was not an easy task on their part because I know there was some angst, particularly with the location of, of Elementary School 19. But I feel that the, the majority of the Board of Supervisors listened to our request and respected our, our decisions on this board. And for that, I'm, I'm very grateful and look forward to, you know, working with them in the future. And, and also very appreciative of the money that they have allocated, you know, substantial bond money and other cash for the three R projects. And, and again, Dr. Taylor, I think that was your, your, your statement of the, you know, the, the case. The state, the State of the Union here is, is not very secure in terms of its, its physical structure and facilities. So it's, it's, it's time, it's, it's critical. And, and I, I think they heard us. You know, sometimes when we meet with the supervisors, you, you never know, you know, what's, what's gonna come of it. But, but on this time, I, I think they did listen and, and we do have, you know, had a majority that, that supported us. So I, I thank them for that. The, the other events, the, the Fine Arts is, is incredible. In addition to the teachers who put in an incredible amount of hours, I think there are also students that volunteer for, to help them and some, you know, for community service or, or other, you know, activities. But there's a lot of students, high school students, that come in to, to help the teachers either, you know, set up or break down. And the, it, it would be interesting to, to tally the number of hours because I have no doubt it would be in the thousands, the amount of time that goes into that, that event. And I, I, I think we should make every effort to advertise it to the, the general public who may not have students in our schools, but so that they're aware of this, this opportunity to come and see the product of our schools. Because as, as you said, you know, you may come in for your child's artwork. I remember mine was this little clay pot. We still have it. She graduated, what, fourteen years ago or so? But, you know, she made it and it was on display and it was like, oh, my child did that, you know? So, so, so it's, it's great. And, and I, I think it gives our teachers a lot of satisfaction, even though they're exhausted, our, our art teachers and, and music teachers and, and all the fine arts. So I don't want to go on because it's the late night and just thank you, everybody, and turn up the speed on those treadmills because the, the, the end comes much sooner than we expect it to of the year.
Ms. Alstead?
Good Lord. Several times. You guys have said something about poor Anne Marie. You've all said since she left this world and then you were talking about her being gone. I'm like, does somebody want to clarify that statement? Good Lord, poor Anne Marie.
She left for a district to the north.
Right, which is way better than she left us and left the world. I don't know, anyway. So I wanna, I do want to thank the supervisors and the staff and the community that came out to, to support this school system. I mean, it definitely takes a village. And can now confirm wholeheartedly after three years of this, there is no shortness of angst during budget season for anyone. So the dedication that our staff shows, the constant pace that they keep, I mean, I don't, I don't think that can be recognized enough how much effort and energy that Mr. Fulmer and his team and put into making sure that every T is crossed and every, every I is dotted. So, so I just want, I really want to thank, and particularly Stafford County parents that really stood up and, and came out. We often have the reputation of, you know, being sort of, I can't think of the other... The only word I could think of was like apathetic because it's, we're so involved in our own schedule and times. It's not really what I mean, but, but you always come through. Like, always, 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 at the end you are there and it is great to hear all of your voices. And everything was well researched, well spoken, and I'm just super appreciative. So I don't normally talk about like the things that I go to or whatever, but I do want to reach out and, and give a big shout out on teachers versus Leos, the basketball game, the law enforcement. That's the first time I've ever attended that. That was a hoot. I had to leave a little early to get my daughter gymnastics, but man, that was some, that was some competition and that was a ton of fun and I cannot wait for them to do it next year. I also did Project Impact at North Stafford High School. We have reinstituted Project Impact this year across our five high schools. Colonial Forge is the only one left to go. It is super powerful and super impactful. Virginia, VCU comes up with their medical team. They do a simulated accident in the parking lot. Our drama kids are out there. The Port North Stafford kids were laying on the cold rainy pavement the day that I went. I did feel really bad for them. But they were troopers, man, and, and they were, they were really excited about it. But, but the speakers that come to speak to our kids, to get them to make better decisions and to focus on their stories are truly eye-opening. The things that they have been through in their lives and what they have overcome and survived is truly phenomenal. So I'm grateful that our schools welcomed Project Impact back and that our students have an opportunity to see that this isn't... We take our responsibility to your safety very, very, very seriously and that's in all facets, particularly in helping you to step out of your 2D world into the 3D one and get a look at some of the, some of the consequences of the decisions that you make. So that was, there is still one more at Colonial Forge. If anybody wants to come see it, that's on May 14th, I think. I'll be at that one as well. The two women, Candace Lightner and Tammy Guido, are just amazingly powerful women that you should meet, anyway. I am a military spouse. My husband's a retired Marine, so I am also here in purple. And supporting our military families always. I, it is a, it's a very different lifestyle as a military individual, but also as a child. Last month I went to, and I'm going this month again, to the Margaret Brent Military Kids Club, where they bring all the kids in before school and they have a bit of community for them there. Last month they talked about sacrifice and what sacrifice actually means. And the kids get to talk a little bit about what they think and feel and go through as a military kid. Yeah. And they're really open, really honest about things. They're sac... We talked about their sacrifices from leaving family members behind in other states and not getting to hang out with Nana and pop up all we, on the weekends, all the way to have to make new friends over and over and over again. So, so it, it's a good time for us to pause and just respect what our military kids go through. It's not an easy lifestyle for them to be picked up, packed up, and, and taken all over the place. Sometimes from international spaces, back to America, back to international spaces. So, so shout out to them and just all of my respect and gratitude. So I want to talk for a second about the eclipse. I built the box with my kid. I felt so Bill Nye running out with that box. Next year, I'm buy... Next time I'm buying glasses. Because I did not understand... Whatever, next time there's an eclipse, I'm buying the glasses. Oh, good Lord. I'll need like trifocals by then. But anyway, if you don't know the box, it's a projection device. I mean, it's fa... It's kind of fascinating. But I don't know what I was expecting to see in that box. But I did use it as a science moment because I felt that it was an important moment to have with my child to experience this eclipse through a box. Not sure that I thought it was gonna be the whole length of the box, but I certainly wasn't expecting to see this little teeny tiny dot at the bottom of it. So, you know, kind of anticlimactic. So all of you who had glasses, you had a much better experience than myself. That's all I'm saying. What, did you not do a box? Did you get glasses? No. But anyway, I, I also want to, want to talk about what our teachers did for our kids. Getting on the buses with our elementary school kids. You know, it's not easy to place an additional task on any of our staff members. So I want to say thank you to any one of those that actually got up on the bus with our kids to make sure that they made it home safely. Because honestly, without you, I, I just don't know what we are. We're just a lot of big buildings with maintenance issues. But anyway, so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for coming and being a part of our family every time, stepping up and just being with us.
Dr. Warner?
Jumping around here. First of all, I would like to say the art show that we do every year is one of my favorite events. And what I love about it is the opportunity that each student has to present something that they made in school. And I'm so excited to see how well the art teachers work with our, our general ed teachers to incorporate these art projects into the curriculum that they're studying. But it's not just our K-12 students, it's our Heather Enfield students, it's our Phoenix students, it's our early childhood students. Everybody gets to participate. And I just want to say that the kids at Moncur that did the drum program, what a great job they did. Everything is so organized and the way those teachers pull that together and make that such a successful event. And I think every member of the community should go see it, whether you've got kids in school or not, because we have some really, really, really talented kids in Stafford. I'm just gonna say that. I want to thank all the teachers that took kids outside to see the eclipse and use their eclipse glasses. I think it was a great learning moment. I know that kids from kindergarten to high school were enjoying it because I heard from several of them. And I appreciate that, that they had the opportunity to do that. I would like to thank the community for coming out and advocating for our budget. I think your voices are important in this discussion. As Dr. Taylor said, we still have forty million dollars in unfunded needs because we can't, we can't fix the budget issues in one cycle. But I think this year, I want to thank the supervisors. They made a huge commitment to 3R repairs, which we have been screaming about for years. And they, they did increase our budget by nine percent. And they're juggling a lot of issues as well. Transportation, public safety, fire and rescue, education. And they have to do it with the resources that they have. I think that even though some of our meetings were contentious, I think that we did reach a point where we were having a good conversation about what the school's needs are and why we've been advocating and why there's been so much tension. And I think that they came through for us in a lot of ways and I appreciate that. I would like to welcome our, our new Military Advisory Committee. And I just, I'm kind of interested to see if this was a happy coincidence that Colonel Brooks was here or if it was, it was planned. Everything's planned, yes. So I do think we do have a lot of military families represented in our schools and our kids face different hardships when their parents are deployed. And I appreciate that we have this opportunity, one more opportunity to help them. Let's see. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Before I call Dr. Chase, just something I was thinking about. Could we add for our, our, that demographic page we put out, the at a glance, how many military-connected kids we have as one of our numbers?
I thought we had that.
I didn't remember seeing that. I'm sure we have it. It's just to put it on the public-facing document, I think, would be really impactful. Dr. Chase?
Yeah, hi. So I just want to mention very quickly that the Regional Governor's Board decided to move the fiscal agent for CGS to Stafford County. So that'll be happening, I think, July 1. And then, you know, we, we were talking about the fact that, that we did reasonably well with the budget this year. And I think a lot of, a lot of that goes to Dr. Taylor really doing a phenomenal job of leveraging the community, right? And, and his staff in communications really getting the word out. I also want to mention that Mr. Towery and Mr. Townsend did a phenomenal job of going to every, I, I don't know how many PTA meetings, the CIP. And, and I mean, I went to three of them, but I know there were, were more. And I think that we really did get a lot of community support, calling supervisors and saying, "Look, we have major 3R needs." And, and that was huge. And so there's a lot of work that happens behind the scenes that we don't always see
or that doesn't always get acknowledged. And I think that's really important. I'm absolutely thrilled that, that Drew Middle School's design process is moving forward. And we might actually get Drew opening by, by 2028. And so, but at the same time, a huge thanks does need to go to the Board of Supervisors and to the entire Board of Supervisors, right? I mean, we, we can't overlook the fact that, that we did very well in terms of funding this year. On a slightly negative note, unfortunately, when we were at the, with PTA members talking about the CIP, one of the things we mentioned was that the legislative branch had approved allowing districts to hold referendums to get a 1% increase to cover infrastructure. And unfortunately, our governor chose to veto that. So we will have to try to fight that one on another day. And then finally, you know, we have this provisional budget. We're hoping that with the, when it comes back, when the legislature finally, legislature and the governor figure out exactly how much money we get, that we will be able to have the compensation for everybody be what it was in our proposed budget. So hopefully that will happen. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Guy?
So I will make this quick, because I'm so tired, I'm giddy and behaving badly. But I want to thank the eclipse for eclipsing, because that was phenomenal. I loved it. I, I'm so thankful that-
For passing in front of the sun.
Yeah, that we got the glasses. I, I thought it was adorable seeing the elementary students get out. And one little girl refused to put her glasses on, but she walked like this the whole time, with her head down across the street. And I was like, oh my gosh, she's gonna fall in a ditch. But she did not. But it was, it was really fun. And I love seeing the post of the students and staff outside and stuff. Want to thank the Board of Supervisors for appropriating money to keep us open. And, you know, adding extra to the 3R, because we desperately needed it. I tried to watch most of their meetings. I know Supervisor Allen deferred something from her district, and maybe other Board of Supervisors did as well. I didn't see every single thing, but that was really impactful to me, because, you know, I mean, it doesn't happen without sacrifices. Because we're at the point where doing the right thing by us now requires sacrifices for other things, which is crazy. Also, I attended Iftar, the celebration with, with everybody. And it was fantastic. It was phenomenal. It was very, very educational. You know, like, I, I knew, I've been to one before and I've been around that community a lot, but I loved the way that Iman explained everything. It just made it so accessible and relatable. And I want to thank the parents and the community members that advocated for us, you know, the green shirt gang, the Meads, the Fingerholzers, the Denims, the everybody's, you know, the Freemans who came out, all of you guys advocating for us, even when we get on your nerves and you don't appreciate our votes. At the end of the day, you know, it's about our staff and our students. And so you swallow your frustration. And I, I love how Shannon's shaking her head, it's like, yep, can't stand you guys. But you still come out every time. And that is what a good community person does. So I just want to let you guys know that I really appreciate you guys, because we've, I don't think, I don't remember Stafford County School Board ever having as much public support as we do now. And that doesn't happen if you guys don't continue to speak out when you're, you know, hanging out with your friends or on your social media. So we accomplished a lot this budget season with you guys. So go and duplicate yourselves and let's do more next year. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to start today with congratulations to Ms. Candia H. Pool, who was recognized today by Longwood University as their theater arts teacher, or their Theater Arts Teacher of the Year. This award is actually typically reserved for high school teachers, but a former student wrote an essay that so moved the selection committee that they actually bent their rules to come back and recognize her. And I was really grateful to be invited to, I love a surprise with a big check. She gets season passes to the theater season. And she and her husband are actually both alum of the theater arts program at Longwood. So it was, it was, it was just a fantastic visit. I also want to thank the first responders from Stafford County Fire and Rescue, as Stafford Schools Maintenance, for responding to Rodney Thompson for our recent incident and working so hard at cleanup to get our cafeteria back into action. And for coming out to advocate, one of the first responders did advocate on behalf of our capital needs. And I, his comments, by luck, I guess, were the absolute last of the night. And I think they left a pretty profound impact. I'm actually grateful for everyone's advocacy during the budget season, whether it's our staff, whether it's our, our people, our parents that are going out, anybody who helped to make this where we landed possible, including, you know, everybody who voted and everything. I'm just so grateful that we are moving forward with the funds that we have, the additional funds we have for deferred projects and our construction projects. It has been a very exciting month, even though spring break was thrown in there and we didn't, my family didn't do a ton during spring break, which was lovely. We had the VDOE here, presenting an award at Brookpoint High School for the, winning the Virginia School Breakfast Award. Some of our middle schools had their showcase night. I attended the one at Rodney Thompson. I also want to thank the Maske de Lea for welcoming us not once, but twice. Because when I was there the first time, I felt very strongly about what we learned is what our principals needed to hear. And I'm really grateful for the people there, making themselves available to our school staff to help manage the needs of our students during, during Ramadan and throughout the year. So, I mean, Ramadan's over now, it's, tomorrow. Also, love the Dare Back Skabal game. I had the added benefit of bringing my fifth grader with me, so it was even more exciting. And we can't wait for Dare Day, which should be right around the corner. Again, the Fine Arts Festival, amazing as usual. And I do want to reach out to every member of our community, even if you have little kids that aren't in our schools yet, this is a great place to have them come and kind of see and explore. We bought our four-year-old. Some of you out there witnessed his little, he had a great, great visit. They have interactive art stations. But he had a moment at the end, because Rocky Run's chorus finished singing and he did not want them to be finished singing, so he cried the whole way out. So Rocky Run, I might be coming to your chorus sometime soon. They also have a, kind of like a cooldown room for kids who are having kind of a sensory overload, because it was, there was so much to do and see and hear. So I was really appreciative of that space for us to kind of have a quiet space and get away from that. So if you are at all concerned about whether or not your family can be accommodated at an event of this size and magnitude, they absolutely can. So I encourage you to come. We had a prop-up prom shop at AG Wright Middle School. If your kids are paying for prom wear, they should not be, you should go check it out. They had so much stuff. And they do multiple events throughout the years for the, for, for the varying homecoming prom, senior prom, the senior citizen prom, and some of the church events. So go, and it is completely free to get dress, accessories, menswear, shoes, anything you can find. They run it so, so well. Open not just to public school children, but to private school children and homeschool children, so the entire community can stop by and participate. North Stafford High School had a business expo that I was able to stop by. And it was a great opportunity to introduce some of our students to employment opportunities in our community during their school day. So it's not an extra stop outside of school. If you are local business that hires high school students and graduates, please reach out to our community, because we will get you included in the next one. We had a great student government day. Thank you to Mr. Cohen for your work in coordinating that again. And special guests, Congresswoman Spanberger and Delegate Cole were around, so they came by and greeted our students as well. That was a huge, huge surprise. And they were really, really excited about that. Like the others, thank you to everyone who helped make the eclipse viewing more fun for our kids. I helped at Anthony Burns during dismissal. And again, the elementary kids are so tickled by the whole experience, even the ones that are walking out like this, which was so cute. And I do want to say, I thank you on behalf of our school division, to State Superintendent Coons for visiting Grafton Village Elementary School, who came to learn more about how we manage our varying student needs in the county. We hope she comes back again. I personally love, she, they had one of those sensory walks, and she did the tiptoes and the jumps and the zigzag walks and the box breathing. She did the whole thing. She really jumped, literally jumped in with both feet. And lastly, I will say that if you are bored in Stafford County, you are not working hard enough on finding things to do, because we have so much going on. The middle school track meets started today. So, as well as all of our spring sports. So we have tons of kids in middle and high school that would love to have you cheering on the sidelines. The spring theater season is upon us as well. Colonial Forge will be doing Alice in Wonderland this weekend. They will also have their Pops concert on the 26th, which is going to be Disney Music. Mountain View has their, the performances of their musical called Something Rotten on Friday and Saturday of this week. And starting the 18th, Brookpoint will be performing Mean Girls. And we'll have some sensory-friendly performances as well. With that, I want to remind everyone, there's no school tomorrow. Eid Mubarak, which I'm, this is our first time observing it as a school division, and I'm really, really grateful we were able to add that to our calendar. Standing committee reports, anyone? Okay, good. Okay, announcements.
The notes are attached, if anybody wants. I would like you to, just the only thing I'm gonna say is that we are having the school board self-evaluation on June 11th. And I'm just requesting that all board members fill out the VSBA Effective School Board Self-Reflection Template. It's just a Likert scale. And just, we'll use that in establishing an agenda.
Okay. Our next regular monthly board meeting is May 14th, with a work session at 5:00 and business meeting at 7:00. We are adjourned.